Virtual meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session.
Recording in progress.
We are here for the Department budget presentations regarding the proposed FY twenty five budget for the county. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Ms. Hummer. Not here yet. Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Raviyan.
Present.
And Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
Madam Auditor.
Present.
At this moment, we have six council members of the seven, and we do have Madam Auditor.
Thank you. Before we begin, do any of my colleagues any questions about the day? Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in Annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features at the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board, and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with a clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this meeting to be held.
Thank you. We will begin today's presentations with the Department of Personnel. Please remember to introduce yourself when you speak. I see Ms. Bedowski. You have the floor.
Good morning. Stephen, did you want to do a quick piece first, and then I will introduce myself and my team?
Sure, Madam Chair, members of the council, Stephen Teru from the Budget Office. The Office of Personnel's budget can be found on page one sixty. I'm going to start with a brief overview of Personnel's budget, though, on page one sixty-one. As shown on page one sixty-one, the Office Personnel's general fund budget increases a little over $600,000. Roughly $400,000 of that is related to personnel costs. The new ADP contract with an upgrade of ADP, which is our payroll system, is about $100,000. Medical services, which are for pre-employment screenings, health screenings of our employees, is about $45,000, and there's an increase in negotiation services of about $80,000, with an adjustment of turnover, $80,000 to the negative. So that rounds out the general fund. The other fund that we budget for the Office of Personnel is the Health Insurance Fund, which is shown on page one sixty-one. It's a little over a $9 million increase. This is related to healthcare claims that we pay out as we are self-insured. We are expecting claims to go up by eight percent next year, which is about 9.1 of that $9.2 million increase. If there's no questions on the budget right now, I will turn it over to Ms. Bedowski to go for her remarks.
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer. I have with me Kelly Lovett, who's Assistant Personnel Officer, and Tally Fritz, our Budget Contracts Manager. Thank you this morning for listening to our overview of the budget. As Stephen pointed out, and as the auditor has pointed out, we have a $9.4 million budget, and it accurately reflects that 75% of that is actually for personnel costs. Our budget this year does include some reclassifications and some vacant positions. We've tried to look at the ones that were vacant and find other utilizations for them for our class that we, for our office, so we have done that. And so we're reclassifying two office support positions into different positions where we have need value in our team, including the class and comp team and a payroll team. And both of these have been vacant for a long period of time, so it is well timed to be utilized for us. The largest, the second largest portion of our budget is our contractual services. And as the auditor noted, there were two places where we have seen increases in the FY twenty-five budget this year, and that is for our ADP contract. As we pivoted away from Workday, we engaged our current contract ADP and found ways to different aspects of that that we were going to improve on. And the first parts of those are going to be for our e-time and leave accrual processes. So we're in the middle of working with ADP now, and the increased costs come from what we anticipate to be some leave accrual licensing and some increased costs for those expanded services. The other piece where we are seeing an increase in our budget would be for medical services, and this is a change to sort of how we do some of our pre-employment medical services in trying to find efficient ways to bring for the departments and employees that need to go through a pre-employment medical. That timeline can be a little lengthy at times if they have to have follow-up services. And so we've worked with our vendor Concentra to find ways to find efficiencies, and one of those efficiencies is on how we do the TB testing. So it's now a TB spot testing, which is much more efficient in turnaround results. However, it is also more costly. So you see the reason for that increase is based mostly on that, and then additional some of the pre-employment psychological services that we are also doing. And so that is what I have to present to you this morning. I am happy to answer any questions you have about our budget.
Okay, council, do we have any questions for Ms. Bedowski regarding the personnel budget?
I have a question.
Oh. Mr. Volkey. Oh, I see your hand. You have.
Good morning, Ms. Bedowski. So, and sorry, my camera's off. I was sort of still in transit, but I'm I'm gonna get my computer up as I'm asking you, so hopefully we can have this seeing each other. So with personnel, what is the typical time that it's taking you? I heard you talk about the savings in terms of the testing and some of the services that you need to perform and how you're trying to find ways to do those more efficiently. But what is the time that you are sort of seeing from you find the applicant that you want in the department, and then you're ultimately able to get that person into a seat doing the work of, you know, the county? What is that time turnaround? Because I know you guys are always, when I talk to the departments, they say, well, it's personnel. When I talk to personnel, it's like, well, you know, there's all these things. And so what is that timing? What does that look like?
Thank you for the question. It actually is very dependent on what the job is we're recruiting for. So I will tell you that non-public safety and public safety have two very different processes. And therein lies a very big difference in the length of time that it takes. Some of that is deemed by the different steps that are required at the state level or different testing, the physical or written testing process that goes into being one of our public safety employees, whether it's police, fire, detention, or deputy sheriff, so they have a set process there. So that does take months. I will not try and hide that fact. But some of that is driven by an annual academy. So we have an annual process for a new set of firefighters, or in the police department, we have three academies a year. And so we have multiple recruitments happening throughout the year for three very set academies. Detention has moved to a continuous process. Their process is a little bit different than the other two, but we've moved to continuous. And so we've been able to significantly reduce the number of vacancies because we are continually bringing them in. There's a little bit of flexibility in where some of their academy work can be done at the state. There's, or they can join other academies for that part and not just housed here. They can also do some, start in the field, if you will, with somebody being field-trained in addition. So we've worked really hard to get that to a very low vacancy rate for detention officers. It's been a great collaborative effort with them. Versus our non-reps, if you will, or our other classified service, non-sworn pub servants. That process can be weeks, or it does depend on the applicant pool. So we generally post a position for two weeks. We have a very, I'd say, five-day usually turnaround to review those applicants for min calls. And then, of course, work with the department, and they schedule their interviews, how that works for them, deliberation to get their top candidate, then, of course, notification, you know, and all those other pieces. So it, we've had it down to weeks for some, and then, of course, for other processes, it's months. Part of the personnel reform wasn't necessarily part of the legislation, but some of the administrative changes that we're going to be working with is working with those departments to help get to that certified list of applicants more quickly and using them as SMEs. So we are working continuously with our departments to try and refine that process and make it better.
Thank you for that. And is there anything from a budget standpoint? I'm sure legislatively, there are other things, but I don't, today's a budget meeting. So is there anything from a budget standpoint that you all need to be able to do the work that you just described more efficiently? Or do you have what you need in your budget?
I think right now we have what we need. I think we have gratefully received a couple of new positions in the past two previous budget cycles. And so we have added to our recruitment team by two, and that helps. We have, each analyst is assigned to a certain number of departments. And I think by having a bigger number, we, they have more attention they can pay to the departments assigned to them. And so that has been a big improvement. So, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Bedowski. Good to see you and your team. I just have a question on the Health Insurance Fund. If you or maybe Mr. Thro can speak to the difference between where we were in 2025 or where we were in 2024 versus what we're looking at in 2025? I know we've heard from the school system, too, similar situations. If you could just speak to the claim increases, any information, just for general public knowledge.
Stephen, do you want to take that?
Sure, I'm happy to take that. So, yeah, as I, Ms. Fiedler, as I went through earlier, so we're expecting claims to go up by roughly eight percent next year. That's in consultation with our healthcare consultant, Aon. From a rate increase, we're looking at a six percent rate increase right now. That's what's proposed in the budget for our employee groups. This is slightly lower than the claims experienced, largely due to some budget serendipity. I would say we have some good claims of rebates, which are, you know, revenues that come back to us from some of our, you know, health administrators. So luckily, we're able to capture some of those rebate revenues that come in to offset some of those claims, at least for next year. But, but right now, we're looking at, you know, it's eight percent increasing claims for next year. That's what our assumption is.
Thank you for that.
Okay, last call for questions for Personnel, council. If I'm not seeing your flag or your hand raised, just shout out. All right, I think that, I think that's it. Thank you so much. We will allow for a moment to transition, and we'll go into budget with Mr. Trumbauer.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I think we'll also be joined by the Budget Office Budget Analyst, Beau. There he is. So Beau, why don't you kick us off?
Sure. Good morning, council. My name is Beau Zhao. I'm the Budget Analyst for our, our office. Our budget starts on page one fifty-four of the budget book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Budget Officer, Chris, for his presentation.
Great, thank you, Beau, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. You can see the several pages of the Office of Budget in the budget book. What you will see is it's very boring. The only real change that we have from last year is we've updated the PSC to reflect the current compensation. And then we actually had a small deduction in some of our office supplies based on historical amounts. So it's a largely flat budget. One other piece of news that I think I brought to your attention a little bit earlier in the season was we are transitioning Darlene Flynn from our office to the Fire Department. So that's happening officially next month. But we are in the process of replacing her with a new analyst. Hopefully, we won't miss a beat. But we wish Darlene very well. I know she's going to be an asset to the Fire Department. We'll miss her, but she's not too far away. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions about the very complex and sophisticated Office of the Budget budget.
Council colleagues, we have any questions for Mr. Trumbauer about the Office of Budget budget? I don't see any.
Excellent. Well, just in case you think you're getting rid of me, I will be back for the Finance Non-Departmental after Billy does Finance. So, thank you, and I'll see you in a bit.
We look forward to that reappearance. We will transition now to Finance, the Department of Finance with Ms. Billy Penley.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. For the record, I am Billy Penley, Controller in the Office of Finance. Today with me, I have members of my team. To my far left is Brian Stink, our Property Tax Billing, Personal Property Tax Sale Manager. To my immediate left is Kevin McMahon, our Grants Manager. To my immediate right is Eddie Kelly Cowie, my Assistant Controller. Next to her is Beth McCoy, our Finance Administration, Budget Preparation, Grants, et cetera. Next to her, moving down the line, is Allegra Nguyen. She is my Billing and Collections Manager. So she handles the cashiers, the online payments. And then on the end, but not least, is Maya Morgan, my Assistant. Thank you for hearing from us today. I am going to jump right to page eight of this presentation, which is also page one thirty in your budget book. The Office of Finance this year has a service-level budget. Total budget request is 12.8 million. Our request is 595,000 or 4.89% more than last year. The increase is primarily attributed to accounting pay packages, postage. We experience two increases in postage rates this year, so we're catching up for that. Increase in the cost for envelopes to mail out the bills and for the customers to mail back their payments. And our Home State Credit Administration, which is administered by the state and formula-driven there. We have had some savings. We did some lineiting scrubbing when we submitted our budget. For example, in our ambulance billing, just looking at past year projections, what we're projecting in the future, and have a better handle on the budgeting for the Medicaid piece that came online back in FY 2021, and also our tax sale advertising. We had bumped that up back during COVID for the number of tax sales potentially going into it because we paused our tax sale in 2020, and we knew in 2021 and 22, we would probably be playing catch-up. But on past year's experience, we are reducing that number there. Next page, please. So this is just the details of our two bureaus. The Accounting Control is approximately 47% of the department. We handle an accounting control, accounts payable, bond sale, debt management, cash, investments, grants, financial reporting. In this bureau this year, in this request here, we are reclassing two positions. Both of them are filled. One is a reclass from a Financial Clerk II to a Management A to recognize the duties that the job is performing. And the other is job description and title reclass. That one has zero impact. Moving on to the next page. Billings and Customer Service, 53% of our bureau here. Busy Bureau, the numbers speak volumes. We send out 215,000 tax bills, 145,000 utility bills, and all those bills that we send out in personal property, 8,000, the calls come into Customer Service, so they're handling them. Unfortunately, that team, folks are calling in to say, thank you for my bill. They're calling in with a problem. So they handle a lot, and I appreciate everything they do for us. In this bureau here, we are reclassing three positions. Two of them are vacant in our Customer Service unit. And I would like adding a layer between the staff and the supervisor to handle training, helping with general customer calls that the Customer Service rep is unable to handle. And another one is for administrative purposes, to keep all the reps on the line handling the customers in Anarundel County. The other reclass is our, one of our Accountant Threes. She's not really performing Accountant Three work. She's performing System Analyst because she administers our Revenue and Tax Billing System units, online payments, and is our OIT System Analyst within the Parks Department. As that said, that is our budget. I am here to answer any questions you may have.
I see Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Penley. It's good to see you and your team. I just have a question related to online payments. I get this question quite often. Are we ever going to move towards a no fee for online payments?
That's a good question, and it's something we have been entertaining, but it will take a code change to do that. For property tax and utility bills in the code, we're not permitted to absorb the fee. And there will be some fiscal impact involved by absorbing the fee of the vendor. But yes, it's definitely on our radar. My Customer Service team gets those questions all the time.
Madam Chair, may I ask a thought?
Go ahead.
So when, when you consider vendors for the online payments, I would imagine that there's a variety of fees depending on the vendor. Is that accurate?
Yes, absolutely. So when we contracted with the current vendor paymenters, the fee schedule was part of the review.
Okay, and can you share under the current contract what, how long we are with the current vendor?
I'm going to defer to Allegra Nguyen here, who's heavily involved with that, the status of the contract.
We have a signed contract started in 2022 with the current vendor, and we also have a one-year renewal after the five years.
Okay, so 2022 initial is five years, and then it's one-year renewal thereafter? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following up on Councilwoman Fiedler's question. So I understand that there would be a cost, obviously, with the vendor, and the county would have to absorb that. But is there some sort of corresponding offset that you would anticipate based on your staff not necessarily having to manage as many payments that are coming in sort of in a physical form? You could possibly be getting more electronic payments. Is that, is there some sort of cost savings there, too? That's what I'm looking at.
Potentially. We're actually slowly recognizing the savings now with folks paying their bills online. We've seen the numbers for across the county, cost to counter payments and payments sent to our lockbox going down. So, yes, I would like to move in that direction there, so we could potentially, one easy place is to reduce our lockbox cost.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions at this time. If I'm missing you, please just.
I had another one. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
So I, I am looking again, I really appreciate the Auditor's Office and the little cheat sheets they put together for us. But, so on the last page of that letter, I think this is with respect to your department and the personal services. It talks about the contractual services figure. In FY twenty-one, that figure was about just under 1.3 million, it looks like. And now it's proposed at 2.3 million. Over the last few years, I'm guessing, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that some of that had to do with maybe infusion of funds under ARPA and CARES and those other programs, the COVID-related funding. What is it that you all did in there that has expanded that up? And as we're across the budget, sort of starting to absorb some of the things that came in with that, what are we looking at absorbing?
Going back to 2021, the increase started there in contractual services. And that's when we first started participating with the Medicaid reimbursement for ambulance billing. So the county has a vendor that bills for the ambulance rides. For Medicaid, it's, the vendor receives 10% of the fee, and for non-Medicaid rides, the vendor receives four and a half percent. So that's approximately about $800,000 a year in fee for Medicaid.
So that's what the distinction is there. That's what the growth is, in that it's just paying out their share of what we're billing? Is that a right way to think of it?
Right, right. Their fee, there's for providing the service to the county.
Okay.
So it's kind of a revenue generating situation by having the ambulance billing. Because, I mean, since inception, we're way over $20 million that we have received for the ambulance billing.
I think the Fire Chief mentioned that the other day in her budget presentation, so.
Right. This past year, we took over the Billing Administration along with the vendor from the Fire Department. Never see it. So the expense for it is in our budget, and the revenue is recognized in the Fire Department's budget.
Oh, bummer.
I know. But they do all the hard work. They're out there saving lives, so they should get credit.
All right. Well, we'll try to give you some credit here, too. So I'll stop asking about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, last call for questions for the Department of Finance. I see no more questions, Ms. Penley.
Well, thank you. We're always here to assist, so feel free to reach out.
And I feel like, Ms. Penley, I saw something about you recently receiving an award, but I could be wrong. Something's.
High-performance leadership or something like that?
Ah, yeah, yeah. Well, congratulations.
Thank you for remembering.
We're gonna reconvene with Mr. Trumbauer, I believe, for Finance Non-Departmental.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't ask if you missed me, because I know the answer to that. But I am happy to be back. For the record, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. You can find the Office of Finance Non-Departmental on page one thirty-six of your Orioles' Orange Budget Book. On page one thirty-six is a nice chart that lays out all of the different components of Finance Non-Departmental. I'm going to do a quick page-turning exercise where I go through each one. Stop me anytime if you have questions. Okay, so turning to one thirty-seven, you'll see the Permanent Public Improvement Fund, what we colloquially call the PPI Fund. This amount goes up or down, mostly up, depending on the debt service of the PPI bonds that are in the capital budget. Next page is General Pago. This is cash that we put into the capital budget. You can see this year it is $170 million, which is up from last year, but down from the all-time high of FY twenty-three, where we had over 200 million. Next page is one thirty-nine. These are the Tax Increment Financing Districts, or TIFs. We have eight active districts. You can see them listed in the table on the top right. The only one with any real action right now is Odenton, and there's $3 million there this year, and that's a transfer to the Capital Project Mark TOD Garage. All the rest of them are largely complete, and those proceeds go into the General Fund. Following that are the Special Tax Districts. These are different than TIFs. We have four active ones listed there, and no real movement. We get a, an assessment every year from Unicap on what the right amounts to put in the budget is consistent with their districts. And you can see some go a little bit up, some go a little bit down, but those are represented in the table on page one forty. All right, next, we have General Debt Service. This is the interest that we pay on our bonds that go, that support the capital program. Below the chart, you can see a breakdown of where that money lies. The majority of it is in the Board of Ed, Capital Projects, followed by General County. And then there's some for the Community College, and then, remember, the Wreckin' Parks Golf Course is held here as well. So all in all, it actually was a modest decrease from. So all in all, it actually was a modest decrease from last year and that's just based on the capital activity from year to year. Next page, one forty two. These are mandated grants, so these are legislatively required payments that we make to certain entities. Largely, this includes City of Indianapolis. And then also remember that for our hotel tax, we give a taste to the Visitors Bureau and the Arts Council. So you can see all of that nets out here. Next page is one forty three. This is simply the contribution to the Garage Fund is a vendor payment. So it's consistent. It's a flat fee. It's been a hundred and seventy thousand for the last several years. Looking to the next page, one forty four, these are the installment purchase agreements. So these are real estate easements largely for open space and farmland. It's a pretty consistent amount year to year. It actually ticks down just a tiny bit this year. But these are payments that we make in conjunction with that program. There'll be another page in a few that is the debt service reconciliation there. Okay, so now we're going to move to page one forty five. This is the contribution to the Self Insurance Fund. Largely flat, it ticks up about thirty thousand dollars. Below the table on the upper right, you can see how that breaks down. Again, Board of Education is a big chunk there, but all the other components are listed there as well. Next page is our contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund or the Rainy Day Fund. Consistent with county policy, we are putting a contribution in to keep that fund at the maximum amount on a budgetary basis. So remember, we can put as much as eight percent of the general fund revenue. And that's what we're doing, seven point eight million to get to that amount on a budgetary basis. I know you'll ask, so I'm going to tell you now that we anticipate that that amount, that total amount by the end of the upcoming fiscal year twenty five should be approximately one hundred seventy point four million dollars in that fund. All right, the flip side of that, if you look at page one forty seven, this is contribution to OPEB Fund. So this actually goes up a fair amount this year. Your number last year, we put in the Board of Ed to the OPEB Trust. We had a placeholder amount. It was pretty, pretty close, but we had to tick it up a little bit as well as our pension costs went up. Understandably because largely of wage growth. But again, below the table, you can see it broken out in which appropriation went to the different components of the OPEB Trust there. Next page, one forty eight. This is the contribution to the community development. Again, this is a flat amount for the last several years. It's a program that used to support, I think, as a separate budget item, some capital projects and it's now in this, this fund. So it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars flat from last year. All right, remember about three minutes ago, I told you there'd be another IPA page. This is it. So this is just the debt service side of that installment purchase agreement. Again, it goes up or down just a tad depending on the calculations. This year it goes down about eleven hundred bucks. All right, getting close to the end here. Impact fees start on page one fifty. I want to call your attention that all the, all the different fee districts are broken out in the table on page one fifty and the appropriation amounts are in that table. I do want to note, because I remember it caused a bit of confusion for me always on the council that the seven school districts are much different than your seven council districts. They are not aligned. And there's only six transportation districts, but you can see how the money falls within those and where the appropriations are. And then these are largely matched up in the capital budget with impact fees that go to support various projects. Okay, now looking at page one fifty one, this is the V L T or Video Lottery Terminal Funds. So this year there is four million dollars appropriated. That's into two capital projects. There's the area parks master plan and transportation sidewalks and road improvements. So that totals four million dollars. You can see a little bit more detailed breakdown on page one fifty two. And then finally, our last page is one fifty three. This is contributions to other funds. So this is just everything that's left, right? And this is where everything gets reconciled. There's a table on the top right of the page that shows how it all rolls up. But there's some explanations below that that show any movement from prior years. But this is just kind of a catch-all that reconciles everything else. With that, that concludes the Office of Finance Non-Departmental, or as I like to call it, the office or the Island of Misfit Toys. But I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have and bring Steven in to answer them, so.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I always like the island of misfit toys. It's an interesting spot. All right, a couple of questions for you, Mr. Trumpauer. One, I'm going to go back to the beginning of your presentation in the budget book. Page one thirty six, where you have the overview of the finance non-departmental budget.
Yes.
Can you walk me through which of the expenditures here are mandated? Debt service, we're required to contribute to something. If we don't do this, there's going to be some drastic consequence. Versus which of these are discretionary and they become things that you can look at and fund or not fund?
Well, so I take, I take your question, Councilman Volkey. I'm, I'm struggling with how to answer it because to a certain degree, everything is discretionary, right? And for instance, if, if the county was in a recession environment or something like the beginning of COVID where we thought revenues were going to fall out, you know, you, you can make decisions that are going to have impacts, but they, they may be necessary, right? But in, in a healthy, in a healthy economy where you're trying to keep the fiscal foundation of the county strong, the, the only one that I would personally classify as discretionary of these would be the contribution to the Rainy Day Fund. And as, as you know, that, that, that's a one-time funding. That's not recurring. Every, everything else supports some sort of foundational county program or obligation such as the OPEB Fund or something like that. So there's not a, you know, there's not really a whole lot of opportunity to, to cut these, to cut any of these back without some either short or long-term consequence.
May I ask a follow-up, Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
So then I guess, taking that and flipping to page one fifty three of your presentation, Mr. Trumpauer, contribution to other funds. So the million dollar contribution to the Campaign Finance Fund, I think that's a discretionary contribution too. Would you agree with me?
Well, yes. Yeah, I, I, I could agree with that.
Okay.
But, but for that, so this, this council passed legislation that enabled that fund. That fund is only viable if it has money in it. And although candidates won't be able to draw from that fund until July one of twenty twenty five, we, we are choosing to seed fund some of it this year and then some of it next year. So you, you could consider that discretion.
Yeah, and I guess that's a policy choice is what I'm trying to get to. That's a policy choice of the council and how much they want to fund and there is not a minimum obligation that we have to fund this amount of money. You all have made a decision on what you think is the appropriate amount and we can look at that too. Is that a fair way to characterize that?
If by you all, you mean the administration, then I would, I would agree.
Okay. So then following up on that, the twenty one million dollars that's going to the reserve fund for public, for permanent public improvements, is that going to pay debt service? Or is that going to a similar rainy day type fund for the PPI program?
So you're looking again at page one fifty three?
Yes, sir.
So, so that is the way that we set up the PPI Fund back in whenever it was fiscal twenty, I think. What, what it did is it technically, it took point one percent of the income tax and it put it in to into reserve in order to fund the capital funding that, that goes in there, right? So that is separate from the debt service.
Okay, so then maybe I need to ask a follow-up for my understanding. When we did the PPI Fund, I had understood that was a two hundred and fifty million dollar increase in our borrowing authority to allow us to be able to do more projects. And the point one percent increase to the income tax, as I understood it, was to cover the debt servicing costs on that additional two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of borrowing authority, basically making sure we had a dedicated revenue source to a dedicated borrowing source, if, if that sort of one-to-one follows. Am I understanding that correctly or did I miss something?
I'm not, I'm not sure that's exactly correct. So
Okay.
In fact, Kaylee, if you can bring in Steven, if he's able to be a panelist, there he is. He can maybe outline the mechanics of this a little more articulately than I can.
Thank you.
Members of council, Steven from Budget. I think, Mr. Volkey, you're generally characterizing it correctly that those, the, you know, the dedicated part of the income tax increase was to go to future debt service. So I think it has a cap of twenty one million dollars. We have now hit that cap as a result of that increase to the income tax. So that is the total amount that will go to the fund every year on an annual basis, I believe, until all the debt services basically paid off from that two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of the borrowing authority. So I think this line item will remain kind of consistent at that twenty one million dollars until all of that debt service is essentially paid off.
Okay, and that's thirty or forty years on the bonds?
Thirty years.
Okay, and so just to kind of make sure I'm fully getting all of this. So what I'm hearing you say is that the annual debt servicing cost is twenty one million dollars. So if we fail to put twenty one million dollars into this particular fund, we will not have sufficient monies to pay the debt service on the two hundred and fifty million that was borrowed for the PPI. Am I understanding that correctly or is the debt service not quite at twenty one million?
So if you were to flip to page, I believe it's one thirty seven of the budget book, that's the actual debt service payments out of the fund. And you could see, I think as Chris mentioned earlier, that that debt service amount is continuing to go up as that debt is issuance and as those construction projects are, are going out. That money, essentially that twenty one million dollars from the general fund is going into this fund to pay for debt service. So it is sitting there essentially as a reserve as debt service continues to go up. Really so fiscally sound and we can pay all of that future debt service. But that number, as you can see, went up by three and a half million dollars this year. It's expected to continue to go up and go up, go up. And that twenty one million dollars is that funding source to pay for that future debt service.
Okay, so again, just trying to make sure I'm fully with you. So it looks like on page one thirty seven, the PPI Fund cost for this year, which is the debt service for this year that must be paid, is ten point seven million. We're putting twenty one million in, so we're effectively overfunding that. And I understand why you want to do it. I'm not, I get that's another policy choice, but, but it looks to me like there is about ten million dollars there that we are putting in that is sort of in addition to the minimum obligation of ten point seven that we have to pay for this year. Am I understanding that correctly?
I'd have to go back and reread forty two nineteen to say, I thought there was a dedicated amount that we had to send over, which was that one tenth of the percentage that was required from that income tax increase. But we'd have to go back and exactly read forty two nineteen, but I believe our understanding is that you're required to pay up to that twenty one million dollars at that result of that legislation.
So, and so we pay up to that amount, but what you're saying is we are obligated to take whatever that one tenth percent on the income taxes, we are obligated to put that into this fund.
I think that is my understanding correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Do you have any more questions, Mr. Volkey?
Do.
Go ahead. I don't see any other council members with flags.
All right, thank you. So when we're looking at the Pago amounts that you have on page one thirty six, a hundred and seventy million and the deployment of that, can you just, I, I had asked some questions about this sort of generally, I think the other day when Mr. Trumpauer gave his initial presentation. But how much of that is going toward the capital program? And how much of that is going toward expenses that are included in the operating budget?
Well, Chris Trump, our Budget Officer, so that hundred and seventy million, that's all Pago deployed in the capital budget. There are other, there are other one-time funding components that are funding certain things in the operating budget. But this hundred and seventy million is all going into the CIP.
Okay. When I'm looking at the Revenue Reserve Fund contribution, the rainy day for that with the seven point eight million, so you know, I'm, just take this as a question. Don't, don't necessarily have to zing me on this because you know, I did want to take it to ten percent on the cap and we've sort of gradually moved up. But if we were to say, look, a hundred and seventy million dollars, well, really a hundred and sixty two million dollars is sufficient to have in there. What would be the position of the Budget Office on that? If you were to look at that and say, we could do a smaller contribution this year to the Revenue Reserve Fund to not necessarily max it out?
So I think, Chris Trump, our Budget Officer, I think, Councilman Volkey, the administration's policy and the long-running policy of the county has been to maximize the rainy day fund at the limit that's allowed. As you mentioned before, there was a robust debate a few years ago about what that amount should be. The administration at this point feels comfortable that eight percent is, is a good amount. I'll tell you personally, you know, we, we've always tried to, you know, to do the the fix your roof when it's, when it's sunny kind of thing, like we're, we're doing okay now. So now's the time to, to put those, those funds where they belong. Because when and if things go downhill, there won't, there won't be any discretion, right? And so the position of the Budget Office, I, I think, would reflect the general position of the administration where we would urge the council to continue the long-running policy and, and maintain those reserves at that eight percent level, the maximum. But and, but I would also caution if the council were to make a policy decision and say that, that they don't want to do that and they want to redeploy those funds, that's one-time funding. So if, if that was to be redeployed or used on something else, I would caution you to make sure that it was to go to another one-time funding component of the budget.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have any other questions on non-departmental with Mr. Trumpauer? I'm not seeing any movement, Mr. Trumpauer, as much as I hate to say goodbye for the day.
I'll be waiting in the wings in case you need me, but good luck on the rest of the hearings, Madam Chair and Council. Thank you and see you again soon.
We're going to transition to inspections and permits. Who are going to go through both operating and capital this morning with us?
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Madam Chair, County Council. Are we good to start?
You are.
One second, Mark.
Sure.
Good morning. My name's Kyle Madden. I'm the Budget Analyst for Inspections and Permits. You can find their budget on page one ninety seven. And now, Mark, you're good to go.
Thank you, Kyle. Good morning. I wanted to introduce the staff here with me today. To my left is Katie Barker. Katie retired in December and is back contractually to help us through this process. Raghu Badani, Assistant Director of Site Inspections and Engineering. To my right, I have Jay Leschinsky, Assistant Director in the Permit Center. And far right is Andrew McCarron, Assistant Director for Building Inspection and Plan Review. Thank you all for the opportunity to discuss our proposed FY twenty twenty five budget. In the past, we have not prepared a presentation or slideshow, knowing that each of you have a very good understanding of the functions of IMP. In addition, our major accomplishments appear in the budget book and we can expand upon those if you have any questions. What I would like to do today is to briefly take an opportunity to recognize the efforts of those sitting beside me today as well as every employee within IMP and their dedication to the county. Each individual beside me here today has been committed to ensuring the growth of their staff through various training opportunities, whether through county sponsors through various training opportunities, whether through county-sponsored coursework or industry-related seminars and continuing education classes. Each is very committed to the mission of the department in providing timely reviews, inspections, and follow-up to various inquiries. As I mentioned, Katie agreed to return to us on a contractual basis after her retirement this past December. While we love to fill her position, she's been instrumental in working with our Budget Office and Kyle Madden to ensure that we stay on course with our expenditures and budget-related items. Jay and Permit Center staff have coordinated closely with the county's Office of Information and Technology to continue to make improvements to the permitting portal within Loon. They are continuously working to improve customer experiences and to reduce timeframes associated with permit-related processes. We've had a recent focus on improving the tenant improvement building permit process. There's also been a major focus on training of recently promoted newly hired staff. There's a level of excitement within the Permit Center that's extremely encouraging to see. An example of this is this past December, Monica Collier in the Permit Center was nominated for and awarded the Permit Technician of the Year. Pardon me, by the Maryland Building Officials Association. Also, this past December, Holly Bellales, our Chief of Licensing, was nominated for Outstanding Public Service Award, along with three other county employees, and she won. Andrew has placed the major focus on training for all of our building and trade inspectors, as well as plan review staff. Andrew recently became a certified building official through the International Code Council and is one of only thirty-four certified in the state. The various training opportunities available afford us the ability to provide the highest level of plan review, building inspection services to ensure the safety of our residences, businesses, and visitors to the county. Andrew and the staff have also maintained a tremendous working relationship with the county's fire department, plan review, and inspection staff. In the community, Tom Bunker, our Chief Plumbing and Mechanical Systems, Chief of Plumbing and Mechanical Systems, also teaches at the Anaroma Community College Trade School in the evenings. He was recently featured on WMAR News for his time and dedication to the plumbing trade and for encouraging the next generation of plumbers. Raghu and his staff have worked with our Department of Public Works and Office of Planning and Zoning over the past year to continue to improve processes between the two departments. And has also worked with community-based organizations on various matters related to the environment. He and his staff have provided public outreach and education through the Watership Stewart's Academy and various other community summits throughout the year. Also in the community, Raghu and other IMP staff have attended three River Day events in the past, last year. And we plan to attend three additional this year. Thanks to the efforts of Tracy Reynolds, our PIO, we had a great setup to allow us to connect with the attendees to promote our work. In addition, last month, IMP's staff attended a career fair at Cat North and to promote opportunities within our department. It's very successful doing that. We have also made great strides over the past year filling our vacant positions, and we are currently down to twelve vacancies within the overall department. With this council, I appreciate the continued open communication and working relationships with each of you as well as your aides. While we have been involved working through various pieces of legislation this past year, I personally like to thank each of you for your efforts on the personnel bill as well as the update to our building code. The open lines of communication are invaluable. Finally, a big thank you to Kyle Madden, the Budget Office, for their continued support throughout the year and assistance with this year's budget preparation. I thank you for your time and we're available for any questions that you may have.
Are we have any questions for inspections and permits?
So, thank you all for your hard work over the last, at least the last year as we're doing this assessment. I think one of the things, if you can sort of speak on, is what defines success for inspections and permits? Could you explain that to me?
Sure, I think there are a number of things because the department covers so many areas. Obviously, our mission is is plan review and inspections. We have a forestry group, but I can let Raghu to speak to that. But I think the most biggest thing that we can do is to provide quick and efficient services to our applicants and residents of the county to make sure that we are processing applications as quickly as we can. A lot of that is directly related to our staffing levels. Whether it's taking in permits, doing a review, inspections, making sure that we're providing quality services. Any of my staff have anything to add?
And and that's good. Is is there a matrix that you utilize that they, when you said efficiency and efficient services, is there some sort of metrics that keeps you up at night that says, you know what, we can do better? For permits, like is, do you, do you track how many days each permit is open and now have an average when it comes to the permitting process for 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 citizens? So when they apply, you know, your objective is, maybe it was ten days last year, now it's nine days and you're trying to get it down to five days. Turn of, now I'm being facetious when it comes to the the numbers, I'm just throwing it out there, but but is that something you are reviewing and or implementing?
We are. Again, Mark Weidemeyer, Inspections and Permits, we are doing that. As you know, we've implemented the new Loon system, so over the course of this past year, our staff has been developing reports to look at what's the timeframe from the time that an application is submitted online by an applicant to the time that a permit processor can get to that, process it, and send it out for review. We're tracking review timelines on the large number of permits. If you want any specifics, if you'd like to speak to Jay.
One of the types of permits, Jay Lashinsky, one of the types of permits we track are those that are outside the critical area that do not require review by the Health Department. So those are permits where people would be able to come in in the past and submit their application and have been reviewed within a couple of days. So the large majority of those permits are are issued within two or three days. Obviously, they're on well-recepted, takes a little longer. If it's in the critical area, the review takes a little longer. But those decks for for townhouses, small additions outside the critical area that do not require a grading permit, those are 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 being reviewed within three, three days or so. Other improvements we've made, and it's mainly based on staffing levels is the permit intake process. At one point, we were down to four intake processors and we had a backlog of two to three weeks of permit applications, so that that was during COVID. Right now, we're still not fully staffed, but we are processing permit applications that were submitted yesterday. So made a big improvement since then. And we've been able to do the same thing with responding to emails and phone calls from customers. So I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. We just need to hire a couple more people so that we can take care of summer vacations and people when they call out, take care of their children because they're sick. So hopefully, that'll happen this summer. We'll be able to continue what we're currently doing.
All right, no, appreciated. The the reason I ask is because it's no surprise, IMP is probably one of the most talked about county entities from from citizens or businesses that are that are operating in the county. And I just want to make sure you're happy with the budget that you currently have. And is it going to allow you to become even more efficient, more effective at executing your, your, your mission? Hate to use the military term there, but yes.
One, one thing I would add to what Mark has said, one of the things that we continue to do on a day-to-day basis is we do have a couple of regulatory drivers that are state of Maryland issues, so state of Maryland control. We are delegated by the state. We also have to meet the stronger management regulations. We also have to meet the county court regulations. And one of the things that we are doing on a day-to-day basis is trying to find efficiencies at a staff level where we can either streamline processes or existing workflows and how can we meet the customer expectations while still meeting the the state-mandated and the board-mandated regulations. So one of the things that, to your point, Councilman Smith, that keeps me at night sometimes is not only trying to be reactive, but also be proactive, staying a one step ahead as to how do we meet the challenges? Now, we, as we work with homeowners associations, say, for example, like D.C. coming down the pike is the the financial resources that they don't have. How do we stay one step ahead and try to help them out? At the end of the day, they are the customers too. So those are some of the things that not trying to be reactive, but more proactive, stay one step ahead while still maintaining the resources that we have, still meeting the day-to-day turn around time. Those are the things that that I think keep me awake at night sometimes.
Appreciate that. Definitely appreciate that. I'm not going to take up too much of your time, but just, yeah, I just want the county government to be, the county government should not be a barrier to success. And, you know, when when I hear from citizens or businesses, you know, I wish I could just snap my finger and make things happen, but I know it doesn't work that way. So, you know, our tool is funding. So if if there is an organization that needs, like yours, who needs more resources to 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 do what you do, so that it makes our, our, our government more effective, I'm all about it. And so that's the reason I sort of asked you all this question. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple statements, then a question. One, appreciate all the work and Mr. Weidemeyer, thank you for the comments about the dialogue. And I, just from our point of view, and I think I speak for everybody on the council, we appreciate you and your staff too. But I know for me and my office, we appreciate you, so thank you. I see Mr. Bronze on the call from DPW. I just wanted to tell him, he doesn't have to jump in, but the new paving on Magathie Bridge that we talked about last week has been done and it looks great, and I think people are happy, so I just wanted to note that. Thank you very much. Okay, to the questions that Councilman Smith was asking, I just want to follow up a little bit, maybe from a slightly different angle and ask, do we do any sort of customer satisfaction surveys, anything where we say to the people who are using your office, how do they feel that that process worked to try to get that type of feedback? Do we, do you do that already? Is that something that the county at large does? Do you know about any of that?
Mark Weidemeyer, Councilman Volkey, that is something that we have talked about over the course of the past year, how to go ahead and generate some sort of questionnaire through the Permit Center from those applicants and are working on that. So hopefully, over the course of the next year, that's something that we would be able to implement, at least within our department.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea if you all can do it, because to, you know, sort of the success, obviously, one of the levels of success is, you know, you guys are protecting people, the other is you're serving people. And so I guess that's, that's one way that you can look at how do they feel the service is. So that's fantastic to hear. On page two hundred of your budget is where you all are moving that position over from the Police Department to be the License Inspector. Can you talk to me a little bit about what the purview of that position will be? And I I'm specifically interested in, when I look at the description for the Licensing Division, one of the things it talks about is parades, carnivals. To the extent that we pass the Special Events Bill, does this move of this position have anything to do with that?
Councilman Volkey, Mark Weidemeyer. No, this was strictly to assist with the additional workload that we would take on for animal control licensing, strictly from that standpoint.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, may I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Been a couple of things I've seen about what's going on at Animal Control. Do you anticipate that you will see any changes in terms of workload there on licensing? What specifically do you foresee at this moment in terms of how this position's going to interplay with that department?
Councilman Volkey, Mark Weidemeyer again. We're, we're doing a deep dive into it right now. What we would like to do is create some efficiencies with the current system, some of the items that we've noted that we would like to change most likely, try and integrate that into the Loon system so that it can be done online easily and efficiently. So we are, we're actually meeting with the Police Department staff next, next week to go over some of the processes that they have to see how we can streamline those and and make it more efficient from what currently exists today.
And do you anticipate this position will be entirely dedicated just to the licensing from Animal Control? Or does this position likely have more duties beyond that?
I think we'll evaluate that as we move along.
Okay. I just am not clear on the volume of licensing through the, through animal care and control and then sort of how that's been working from their end.
Understood, and that's part of our discussion with the Police Department as well. So I think overall, there, there will be some overlap between our current licensing situation. You mentioned the Special Events Permit, you know, maybe there are other areas that that position can certainly fill or duties, handles other duties as well. Obviously, we want to make it, that area as efficient as possible. So we will be looking, looking into that deeply.
Yeah, I I have no doubt that you're going to look at it carefully. I fully get that. I guess, and I mean this, please take this the way it's intended and not in any other way. But with respect to the metrics or whatever it is that you're looking at that justifies the request for this position that obviously through, you know, the budget review process has made it to this point to us, what is it that you've presented that justifies the need for this position?
Well, I think it was not necessarily an additional position. It was a transfer from the Police Department to handle those duties. So it's, it's been the information that we've received. I don't necessarily have any metrics to present to you right now. I can certainly take a look into it and send, send the council something online, if that helps.
Yeah, I think if, to the extent that you can provide any additional information on whatever this position was doing before and then the lateral move over here and what the workload was before versus what it is now, that would be certainly helpful, especially in a budget where we're really very tight in terms of additional positions that are being added. So, thank you for that.
And again, not to belabor the point, it is a transfer of an existing position.
Well, I'm, Mr. Weidemeyer, I would love to have the discussion about the increase in permit fees across the board. They're, they're pretty substantial. And yet, your building permits are certainly some going down or remaining flat. Can you speak to the, the general sense? I was needing to see that anywhere from seventy-two percent to two hundred and seventy-five percent increases on the variety of, of fees. So I'm going to put that one out there, and then I also want to ask, how do you think Anaromno County compares to our surrounding jurisdictions and the cost to build, let's say, a house residential construction?
Mark Weidemeyer, Director of Inspections and Permits, so for your first question, I'll rely somewhat with the Budget Office for some, some input. But I think the general consensus is that for at least the past twenty-one years, our fees have not increased. When you look at fees within other departments, impact fees increase each year. Water sewer allocation fees increase each year. Our fees have remained flat. And we basically do not cover our cost. We're not covering the cost that the applicants, the benefit to the applicants, so. at some point, uh, the fees need to be increased and, uh, I would rely a little bit on our Budget Office regarding the percentages and how that was, uh, derived from the, uh, ECI index. Um, so Kyle, I don't know if you want to jump in for a moment?
Morning, Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. Um, my understanding is that originally these fees are supposed to cover the costs of the department, permits. Um, those costs have grown and the revenues have not. The most recent estimate is that there's about a seven million dollar spread now between the amount of revenue coming in and the amount of costs going out. Which basically means that the taxpayers are subsidizing something that is supposed to be paid for by the people that are using the services. So that's one of the biggest reasons why we or the department felt it necessary to update their fee structure. Um, yeah, we have, we can share this information with you guys afterward. Um, but that's one of the biggest driving factors is that spread.
Thank you. Is it possible to, um, spend some time on my second question? But actually, before we move to my second question, I understand that the, the, um, the spread and, and the fees not covering the work. But I mean, isn't there a public, a public benefit from the um, role of inspections and permits in the county, not just, uh, for the individual applying for the permit? Guess it's a value statement, but.
Hi, uh, Madam Chair, I can take a stab at that if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, Chris Trump, our Budget Officer. Um, so I, I just wanted to follow up on Kyle's earlier point. Um, the, the driving force behind the new fee schedule was that these fees have remained unchanged since I, I believe the county exec said two thousand and three in his budget address. Um, so none of us were around, I don't think, in county government during that time, but the, the presumption and kind of what we have heard is they were originally established, uh, to not necessarily a hundred percent offset, but to be attached to the level of effort to provide those services, right? And what's happened over time is obviously things have gotten more expensive. Those fees have remained flat. So you, you are correct in my opinion, th- this is a general county service that's provided, um, you know, similar to police and fire coverage and wrecking parks and everything else. But this is a specific service that is dedicated to um, certain development activities, whether you're, you're building a, a big housing development or whether you're replacing the deck on your home, right? And so, um, what, what the administration felt was that it was time to update that fee schedule. And the calculation that the Budget Office worked with inspections and permits to do was to try and update what today's costs would be compared to the last time that fees were increased. And if, if you look at how all of the different rates are changing, there's not one flat percentage that they all go up. Um, it's, it's close on a lot of them, but this is because IMP went through every line and, and did make some of, somewhat of a values judgment and say, okay, well, this level of effort has gone down um, since two thousand and three because of, I don't know, computers, right? And so, um, there was that level of kind of manual review to all of the, all of the permitting fees. So some went up more, some went up less. Um, and that was to try and kind of update the general, uh, level of effort with each of those fees as well. And so, um, it's not a straight calculation and I don't think that it will ever one hundred percent cover all of the county effort that goes into every individual fee, but it does set up a more realistic attachment to that level of effort, if that helps answer the question.
It does. Do we have a sense of what percentage of permits are, um, your backyard deck ver- or your shed versus, you know, new development?
Yeah, I think IMP team will take that one, hopefully.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Uh, Mark Weidemeyer. So I don't have that information off, offhand right for this meeting, but we can certainly provide that to you, um, in the next day or so.
Thank you. Um, and I know I had put out a second question about, um, the general cost of construction in the county. Um, do you have a, a way to answer that?
Um, Mark Weidemeyer, uh, Madam Chair. So if, if I recall, you were looking to see how we compare to other jurisdictions? Or?
Correct. Correct. Since, since taking office, I mean, I, there's always been, there's been a general, uh, number thrown around. Uh, I think when I first took office, people would say it would cost, you know, thirty-seven thousand dollars in permits and fees to build, to build a home in Anarundel County. And I believe that, that number has, you know, certainly increased over, um, the last, uh, few years. So I just didn't know if you had a sense of what that is and how it compares to our neighboring jurisdictions.
So we did prepare a chart here that, that I can share that looked at our surrounding jurisdictions just for a handful of permit types, uh, to see how we compare. When you talk about, you know, all permits and fees, then, then there are the number thirty-seven thousand, I think a lot of people would include permit fees, allocation fees, impact fees, everything into that total number. Um, I think our, our permit fees would be much lower than, than any of the impact fees or allocation fees. Um, so i- if you like, I can provide the chart and the surrounding jurisdictions that we looked at as a comparison. We are, I can just say right off the top of my head, we're in line with Montgomery County with, with the proposed fee and still far under Prince George's County with our proposed fees. Um, our current fees are much lower.
Yeah, I know I would be interested in seeing that chart for, for sure. Looks like I'm seeing some heads nod uh, of my colleagues. Did you want to show that now or you wanted to send it to us separately?
If you could, if I could send it separately, I'll go ahead and do that.
That's fantastic. Do we have other questions, uh, for inspections and permits this morning? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on your questions, does that chart that you're referencing, Mr. Weidemeyer, include everything like capital connection, paying for, you know, e- basically soup to nuts, like everything that it would cost in terms of governmental fees to build a residence in this prop- in, in this county, whether it's a single-family property, whether it's, um, uh, some sort of townhome or whether it's a, a multifamily?
Uh, Councilman Volkey, it does not include soup to nuts. We were just strictly looking at permit fees. And we did basically an example on a two thousand five hundred square foot house because our fees are based upon, you know, go-by square footage. It's, I will also say that it is extremely difficult to compare every permit type to the surrounding jurisdictions because they're all calculated differently. Um, it, it, it's, yeah, so we don't have that information. It's, it's pretty basic. We looked at a new single-family dwelling, residential deck, residential shed, handle plan revisions, extensions, renewals, reinspection fees, investigation fees. Um, tried to hit some of the, I would say more popular, but, you know, more utilized permit types to do that comparison.
And it's only if it's a deck that's over two hundred square feet and not freestanding.
Correct.
Oh, good. All right. Look forward to seeing your chart. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey is very proud of that legislation he passed. Um, got to take the wins when you can get them. Um, the, um, your, our, I understand you're, you're absorbing, uh, an additional staff. Can you speak for a moment? I know you mentioned you have vacancies. Um, and I realize, can you speak a little bit to, to your vacancies and, and what you see are the barriers to filling those vacancies?
Sure, uh, Mark Weidemeyer, inspections and permits. So as I mentioned, we're currently down, I'm sorry, I misspoke, we're down to twelve vacancies within an apartment. Uh, we have five in the permit center. Uh, we've had, um, I guess with those five, either promotions to other positions or maybe staff, uh, move to other jobs outside of the county. So we have five there. Within, uh, Ragu's site inspection, uh, engineering group, um, we have four vacancies. Uh, within Andrew's group, we have two and I have one vacancy in the administration, which is Katie's position. So overall, when you look at the size and the scope of the department, we're, they're relatively spread out. Um, and you know, what do we have? A hundred and forty-four, hundred and forty-five positions. So we're down to twelve. Um, not too bad. Uh, and I feel like in permit center especially, we've, um, done pretty well, even though we have five vacancies. Uh, we have a number of applications to review right now and are going through interview processes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Do we have any other questions for inspections and permits? I don't see any other questions. Were we? Were we going to be talking about capital with you as well?
Yes.
Are, are we ready to move along to that?
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen with everybody. Just. Can everybody see that?
Morning, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Raghu. I'm Assistant Director for inspections and Permits. So for capital budget, IMP has three capital projects. Uh, uh, first project is C five eight two seven hundred, uh, forest conservation mitigation. Uh, this is on budget book page sixty. Um, this, uh, project essentially is setting up a county mitigation bank, uh, if you will. Uh, all capital projects, like all other development projects have to mitigate for forest loss through the, the development process. Uh, this essentially sets up a, a self-funding mechanism where the fees are paid into the, the, uh, the mitigation bank or the, the capital project. Uh, currently we have, uh, two mitigation sites that we have set up. Uh, the, there was ten acre site up in Rockhole Creek Park, which is a county park, uh, which was put in last year. Uh, this year we put in, uh, uh, about four acre, three and a half acre parcel up in Croft and Civic Association of Group Three. Uh, we just purchased that as an easement, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars. And we are not asking for any new funds in FY twenty-five, uh, as this is a, a self-funding account or set up to be a self-funding account. Uh, this is the three and a half acre, three point two eight acre site that we just planted, uh, last fall. Uh, the second project is on page twenty-seven of the budget book. Uh, this project provides us, the department the ability to purchase properties and put easements on properties, uh, for the purpose of preserving and expanding, uh, tree cover, forest cover in the county. Uh, we are currently working with stakeholders, internal and external, to enhance our ability to find properties and put easements and purchase property. Uh, to put, uh, either, uh, purchase fee simple or put an easement on those properties. Uh, this past, this fiscal year, we have, uh, put an easement for one property, which is, uh, at forty-nine Jones Station Road up in Arden. Uh, this is right behind the, the seven eleven, if you are aware of that area of Group Two. Um, in FY twenty-five, we are asking, uh, or we are requesting five hundred thousand dollars, uh, from the S C F E low account, which is on the operating side. This will allow us to, uh, kickstart and jumpstart these efforts, uh, to preserve, uh, and preforest where we have opportunities. Uh, this is the, the four acre parcel that we were able to preserve this, this fiscal year. Uh, the third project is on page sixty-three of the budget book. Uh, this project provides assistance to the Chesapeake Bay Trust in Green Campus Project. Um, this will be used to cover partial cost of the stronger devices for the treatment on the, uh, trust property. This is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This was first approved this fiscal year. Uh, we have processed an agreement, uh, to award this money to CBT and we are not asking for any new funds in FY twenty-five. Uh, concludes the, the capital budget for IMP. Happy to take any questions?
Ms. Hummer? You might need to take over. I don't know. I think Ms. Pickard's having some technical difficulties.
Ms. Hummer, you're muted.
There's my technical difficulty. I didn't unmute myself. So, Ms. Pickard? I don't know where she is. So, Ms. Pickard, are you there? So, are there? Are there any questions about the capital program? All right. Ms. Pickard? She has the script in front of her. Hold on.
There I am.
There you are.
This whole Zoom presentation off the screen of my computer when my phone rang and I'm like, not get it back. My apologies. It does not appear we have any questions for, um, IMP regarding their capital program. Is that correct? Well, thank you very much. My apologies again for my technical difficulties. And, uh, we will move along in our day to planning and zoning.
I'll give it a second till I see the planning and zoning is ready to go.
Good morning. Kyle, did you have a table set real fast?
Yep, real quick. So Kyle Madden, Budget Office, I'm the, um, Budget Analyst for Planning and Zoning. You can find their budget on page one eighty-eight of the budget book. And I will turn it over to Jenny for her presentation.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. Uh, my name is Jenny Dempsey. Um, I am the Director of the Office of Planning and Zoning. Uh, with me this morning is Alice Priceman. Uh, she's the Deputy Director, um, of, of the department. And Ms. Christman, you have the floor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jenny. I am going to share my screen in a classic way where I tell everyone I am sharing my screen. So first of all, I'd like to thank the County Council, the Budget Office, and of course, the County Council staff for making today possible. I'm grateful to be here and to presenting my fourth budget to the County Council. Before I dig into the slides, I have actual other Before I dig into the slides that have actual other context on them, I wanted to bring your attention to page one eighty-nine. The Office of Planning and Zoning's budget for FY25 is roughly thirteen point eight million dollars. Twelve point six million of that is for personal services. That makes up ninety-one point four percent of our budget. Those are our people. That is our salary for approximately eighty-five full-time employees. That includes four appointed employees, and we also have six contractors as well. That's ninety-one positions. Of those positions, we currently have six vacancies and we are actively recruiting for four. I thought that was important to bring up as those are the individuals who are supporting the planning and zoning needs for a population of over five hundred ninety thousand people, and we are busy. I will be doing an overview of our activities from this past year. Jenny will go in, sorry, Ms. Dempsey will be going into some parts of our organization chart, and then we'll conclude with our FY25 budget. I will get this party started. In FY24, as all of you know, we got going with our region, our region planning efforts. We are at an interesting juncture right now where we have activity going on throughout the entire county. All three rounds of region planning are in play. When the tail end of round one, we are doing SACs for round two and at the start of round three. In our zoning division, we launched the Land Use Navigator on June fifth last year. So we're almost at a full year of service within that platform. There are some fits and starts as one would anticipate introducing any new part of technology. There were some in-house trainings, particularly with Arizona Enforcement Team, but we are continuing to be up and running on that program and also collaborating with other departments who are curious with how that is operating. The program area that saw the biggest growth was within our Cultural Resources and Preservation Planning Program. They absorbed the Agriculture and Woodland Preservation Program from Rexon Parks. This comprises a valiant team of two who is working to preserve agricultural land throughout the county. This team also expanded their project management to support Crownsville Master Plan efforts, as well as conducting their usual public outreach and preservation planning. Finally, last but certainly not least, we continue to administer Article eighteen. Everything from zoning enforcement to site development review, we continue to be very busy. And with that, I will be handing the mic to Ms. Dempsey to review our org chart.
Good morning, everybody. Just to kind of give everybody a lay of our land and plan the Office of Planning and Zoning. We have the Administration Division, which is comprised of myself and Alice and two other employees. Then we have the Planning Division, which houses our cultural resources folks, our long-range planning staff, which I know you all are very well know them very well this day and age. Then we also have our research and our GIS section. And then we move on to our Development Division, which has our critical area, regional residential, and our transportation sections. And finally, our Zoning Division, which is our zoning administration section, and then our zoning enforcement section as well, which many of you call us about that particular section as well when you have needs. And so that's basically the lay of the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Looking ahead to FY25, we will be continuing our region planning efforts. This includes outreach funding for community grants at thirty thousand dollars. We are allocating ten thousand dollars roughly for each region, for regions five, six, and eight. We haven't identified the organizations yet, but we hope to continue leveraging these community grants to broaden our reach to underrepresented communities. We are considering, we have funding for translation for adopted plans and outreach. And we are also continuing our outreach efforts within the region plans with funding that would support comp zoning signage, as well as SAC meetings, drop-in sessions, and other public events that we plan on attending. The second item is supporting an Article eighteen code update. This code has not had a comprehensive update since two thousand and five. So bringing on an hourly contractor to work on this project is going to support that effort. And then we will continue to serve our communities and stakeholders with our preservation, historic planning, zoning administration, and enforcement, and of course, our site development review. Next year, at this time, I hope that we can talk about having some progress and actually implementing Lune within the Development Division. And also be talking more about our expansion and continued growth with the Agriculture and Preservation Program. Going back to that program, we did just bring in a new leader in March, so we hope to have some progress on that when we meet again. With that being said, that concludes the operating budget part of our presentation. We're happy to take questions.
Do we have any questions on the operating budget for planning and development here? I can only see your screen. I cannot see all of my colleagues, so council members, you can, oh, here we go. There you are. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for that presentation. Out of curiosity, what is the estimated timeframe for the code rewrite of Article eighteen?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Fiedler. We have, are working on it right now. We have a timeline in place, and hopefully, we will be able to get that on the legislative calendar within the next year. But, you know, I'm, you know, other priorities sometimes take, take place over this, but it's very important, I feel, that for external and our internal customers, that we have a code that's, that's usable and not as antiquated as what we currently have to work with in the confines. And it's, it can be simple things like definitions and stuff like that that are just, you know, they're twenty years old. A lot has changed in the world in twenty years. So I'm hopeful that we have a team working on it right now and meeting actually weekly, right, internally, so.
Great. Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So understanding that you all are actively working on that rewrite, assuming that the contract is funded, I would assume then you're just passing where you are in the phases of rewriting it to the contractor and the contractor would pick it up from there.
Yes, and then there are other parts of the code that we still would need to tackle. The sign code, for example, is one that I know that has been on our zoning administration's radar for quite some time. So there's other things that need to be done to be right sizing other aspects of our code.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Wilkie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So looking at page one ninety-one of the budget book, under the Administration section, the increase of three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars for contractual services. So I saw from your presentation, one hundred and sixty-seven, five of that was related to that senior level planner to help you with the Article eighteen rewrite. What's the balance of the increase there in terms of costs?
That one hundred and sixty-seven thousand that you saw for the senior land use planner would actually be buried in the personal services. What you're looking at for contractual services is, that's three seventy-three. If you look up to the grant fund planning at three forty-three, that actually leaves a difference of roughly thirty thousand, which can be, I believe, can be applied to other grant, grants, SAC grants, and I'd have to get back to you on that one, but that's where that difference really lies. So.
Okay, thank you. So is the fund source grants from other entities that's driving your contractual services?
Mm-hmm. So we have to put that in the budget, even though we have not quite received the grants yet, and so that's how it's showing up. That's how I understand it.
Okay. I'll just await a little more information on that then. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have any other questions for the Office of Planning and Zoning? Are y'all prepared to move right into capital?
Sure.
You have the floor.
Naomi, are you going to set us up, or did you want me to go ahead and get started?
Naomi McAllister, Office of Budget. Yes. This department has two capital projects as presented on the slide, and they are on page seventeen and thirty-one respectively in the budget book. And at this time, I can turn it over to Ms. Christusman, Christusman, sorry.
It's okay, Naomi. Alice Christman with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We, these, the capital budget is new to the Office of Planning and Zoning budget. This is part of the Agricultural Preservation Program. These are essentially pass-through funds with OPZ, or the county will receive funding from the state to fund programming that preserves agriculture land and protects it from future development. The biggest difference is that rural legacy has geographic limitations based primarily in Southern Anaromalous County. So these easements mean that the land is protected essentially from future development rights. The, but funding for this is is based on, quite frankly, working with landowners who agree to go into easement. And, you know, I can defer to Ms. Dempsey, who has more expertise in this area. But we are very new to this program and bringing it into the department with bringing on new leadership in March. So we do have seventy-five thousand in the budget for operating costs that we hope to leverage to further grow the program, which includes marketing, event planning, working with partners, and making sure we have the right kind of equipment, including being able to go out and conduct over two hundred and fifty inspections a year. Being said, we can take questions.
Do we have any questions on the capital side for OPZ?
And again, that's, I believe, that's pages twenty-two and thirty-one.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not so much a question, just as a comment, but as you work to grow the program and work on the community outreach in order to do so, if you wouldn't mind just sharing with me the information on how my office can be help and support and assist you in that process as far as communicating with folks and getting the message out there, please, please be sure to reach out. Definitely would like to support and be involved.
Absolutely. I'm very excited about having this now residing in OPZ, so it's egg preservation is very near and dear to me, and we will definitely appreciate any assistance with outreach for the programs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it possible to put the two capital projects back up?
Sure.
I want to make sure I note the correct one. Okay, so the rural, thank you, the rural legacy program. Is it possible if we acquire a property that is mostly greenfield or just not forested to kind of marry our interests in creating forest mitigation banks?
The rural legacy program is one of the most strenuous in terms of what you're allowed to do on that piece of property. Probably have to be a conversation with the Department of Natural Resources that, that basically administers that program.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, it's, that one's through the Department of Natural Resources and the other, the math funds, it's actually through the Department of Agriculture. So there's two different state agencies that we will be, we interact with for these two different programs.
Understood. My thought process, just obviously, I'm not behind the scenes like you all are, is instead of purchasing one property for forest mitigation and another for rural legacy is buy one and kill two birds with one stone, but I understand that there's requirements and such that have to be met, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions for the Office of Planning and Zoning? I don't see any. So we can move along. Thank you so much for your presentation this morning. I believe transportation is next.
Thank you.
Hello. Good morning, council members.
Good morning, Mr. Sneed.
Our Budget Analyst is going to share the presentation in a moment.
Good morning. My name is Darlene Flynn with Budget Office. And the Office of Transportation's budget begins on page one seventy-three in the budget book. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to the Director, Sam Sneed. I was going to share.
The Office of Transportation presented FY25 budget. Next slide, please. Our office has been committed to equity university inclusion. Established a committee in the office to ensure that these practices are initiated and maintained for hiring practices in the workplace in any of our contracts. Next slide, please. The Office of Transportation has multiple functions. They include transportation planning, transit operations, capital projects, grant management, and then innovation. Next slide. This year, we were able to fill all of our faculty positions. We are fully staffed, and that helps us function at a higher level. On my left is Kristin McGill Dunne. She is our Transit Administrator, and on my right is Brian Albrecht. He's our Planning Administrator. Next slide, please. These are all the plans that our staff either leads involvement in or contributes to the state and county level and regional levels. Next slide, please. We had some major accomplishments this year. In the twelve-month period preceding this date, we went over three hundred thousand riders. It's a pretty big deal. Since pre-pandemic, we were floating around one hundred thousand riders. And this is attributable to a number of factors in terms of improvements to the system, making the public more aware, marketing, and really making a concerted effort to reach out through events, online, social media, and improving our missions contractors' capabilities. And some enhanced technology as well. We had some really big enhancements when it came to the Passio app. It's the live feed of all of our buses throughout the county, and everyone has the ability to track those from a public perspective. They can plan their trips, get to and from work, services, healthcare appointments. We also have the Pingo app, which allows on-demand service in South County. With this proposed budget, we're hoping to extend that to the North County Hall. We plan on purchasing electric vehicles with a grant we were awarded in that delivery in the summer of this year, hopefully by July first. We are in the process of completing our five element plan. We'll be presenting that to you all shortly. This is our first TDP prior to this, the RTA developed our TDP. So this is really laser-focused on Anaromalous County's needs for the future. We continue to contract with Bird. That's a scooter and e-bike share service. We've extended it from parole as far as Arnold and Serna Park. And we're hoping to extend it to other areas in the county, in Glen Burnie and Oderton. Also been implementing a lot of our Vision Zero goals, the combination of initiating design and construction of several projects. Just keeping a mindful eye on our new Vision Zero Dash partnership with DPW's Chief Traffic Engineer. We also adopted the Walk and Roll Plan, and we have a series of new bicycle maps, transit maps and apps. In past, last year's budget, two-five cent ride fee was passed, so we can see that be to supplement the cost of operating our transit service later this year from the state. Next slide. So this is a map of our present services within the county. And we continue to provide fixed route service. Those routes that were extended really provide better north-south connectivity than ever before. Another reason for an increase in ridership. Next slide, please. We continue to provide zonal services in North County and South County. We've had some good numbers coming out of both of those areas. Extended service in the North County area with the help of an LDC grant supplements a portion of our budget as well. This is a map indicating our growth. As you can see, the orange line is when the pandemic occurred, how much ridership hit. And then the purple line at the top is where our ridership sits now. So we're trending above all prior years in every month in each of these years. As you see, the green line and the blue line and now the purple line, we're exceeding our ridership from prior years. For three years going down. Next slide, please. Now, there's a big future to present potential of microtransit expanding in our county. And we have a mindful eye toward that. We continue to try to apply for grants and extend those possibly in the future budget years. Next slide, please. And there are also other additional future considerations for routes to better connect areas of the county. There are high needs in the Port Mead area. Getting to and from that area from other parts of the county has been something that folks who work for Port Mead and NSA leaders there indicated as a uphill point of importance. Next slide, please. We've had a lot of innovations. As this were, we have the Rite Go app, the passio.com app. But we also invested in the Transit App, which connects people from our transit system to other transit systems such as MTA and RTA. So they can plan a multi-bus system type trip. Next slide. And one of the things that we've worked on in the coming months is an application or ferry between our county and Annapolis City Dock to Leanne Anne's County. This is a joint venture partnering on an application. But that will come into play for years to come. But this is our first attempt at obtaining some federal funds to issue that. Thanks. I want to thank you for your support of the Office of Transportation Programs and your commitment to fair free transit in our county. Other counties are starting to mimic what we've done here throughout the state in providing fair free transit for this suburban transit system. I think it's a great step forward and good to maintain and were to continue to increase ridership in our county.
Do we have any questions for the Office of Transportation at this time? Ms. Feedler.
Good morning, Mr. Sneed. Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions on various projects in District Five. I know the Cypress Creek Route Two sidewalk project, is that still in the state's hands? And if so, do you have any indication on where they are in the process?
Yes, that is with the state. It's presently in the initial design phases, but I want to turn it over to Brian Albrecht for more specifics on that. Give me one second and I'll pull it up.
They're working, they're working, like I said, they're assigning consultant, had to set up the federal funding and they're working on PTA. I'll share. They're in the consultant, getting the consultant started on design.
Okay, so they haven't started design. They're just starting the process of picking a consultant and then working out the cost sharing.
Yes, they're in the middle of that phase.
Okay, is there any indication on how much longer that will take? I know this is a project that we discussed last budget.
I don't have a date, but we can get you that. We can get a schedule.
That would be very helpful, I think, from for the community to just know the update.
Will do.
Madam Chair, may I keep going or would you like to move around?
Well, I just wanted to see if the Office of that was more of an operating presentation. Do you have a separate capital presentation?
We do. I just stopped to pause on the operating to go over to capital. I was waiting for your cue.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
I don't know if your question is more related to capital, Ms. Feedler, if we wanted to wait for their presentation or you wanted to continue with your questioning. I'm I'm fine either way.
I'll wait. I got a little excited. My apologies.
I understand. Mr. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's there's a lot going on here. So looking at your budget, I guess the biggest increase that I can see is the little more than two million dollar increase that is the county budget now absorbing transportation costs on a contractual basis that had previously been covered by some of the COVID era grants. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so can you walk me through? I mean, I heard you say it, but I want to focus specifically on this pot of money. What is this two million dollars covering and what is sort of the service extent of what this two million dollars provides? And without it, what would effectively go away and with it, what effectively stays, if that makes sense?
Sure. The largest part of our contractual services budget is for the TransDev contract. TransDev provides us through the GM, safety supervisor, two other oversight supervisors, our line dispatchers, who dispatch calls but also answer calls for each line in the service. Also for all, on average, sixty driver salaries. So we are billed with an hourly rate based on all of those bumbled up. We provide the vehicles, but we also pay for the maintenance of the vehicles. So the contract with TransDev increases each year typically based on a budgetary amount that's similar to the market or other other vendors. They come to the table, they make a proposal. We we have our contracts office make a counterproposal. They also negotiate separately from us with their union on what the rates for the drivers are. So depending on what that driver rate is, it causes an increase in the contract cost. But also each year, there's an annual increase due to cost of living and whatever other factors they might propose. What's the code we use for the annual two point two percent?
CPI?
So they make the proposal, we counter, and then we compete where we think is feasible. CPI with the contracts office and the vendor. Our next chance to bid that contract out is FY twenty-six is when we're going to put it out for an RFP. But this is the vendor we're locked in with unless there's a non-performance issue. And you know, you can terminate the contract and bid it out to someone else. They are offering very competitive rates. They were the low bidder. That's why they were selected initially a number of years ago. So this is about the best rate that we can receive as a county at this point in time. I will say that we are the lowest paying jurisdiction in our region for driver pay. So they also offer that rate because we have lower driver pay. But that causes issues in driver retention. So anything lower, we put ourselves at risk for losing drivers. If we wouldn't be able to oversee and run the service without drivers, that's the most important piece to our transit operation. So that that long but short, that's where the majority of those contractual services funds go to the the TransDev contract, the operator.
May I follow up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So with that, and this is what I guess I want to understand about something you said. The contract was executed during the a few years ago, it sounds like, at some point in the past. And that contract was a multi-year contract and that contract was initially funded with COVID funds. But it sounds like we are obligated to continue that contract for at least another fiscal year. But we don't have COVID funds to cover that, which is why it's being absorbed in the general fund. Is that? Am I understanding the funding sources correctly and what the obligation is?
Well, it wasn't necessarily initiated in the COVID year, but
Oh, okay.
We use county funds prior and now we use COVID funds for a short period of time. And then it went over to the County General Fund once those COVID funds disappeared. Just similar to most other departments with their costs. Once the COVID dried up, we went to the County General Funds for operation of our system. We also receive a small supplement from the state in the federal government. So we have, we're leveraged when it comes to funds from the LDC for operations in the state. So we aren't fully funded by the County General Fund. We do have some supportive grants that help our operations as well.
Okay, thank you for that. So I guess, again, this is, I was asking Mr. Trumpbar some of these on finance, not departmental before. But what is sort of the baseline obligation that we have under the contract? What must we fund? Is there an amount that is an absolute minimum? Is there an amount of this that is in excess of that minimum?
Oh, there's no amount in excess. This is the base to keep our lines functioning and our on-demand service functional. If we go below that, we'd have to cut lines and cut services.
Understood. And so I guess my question is, can we do that? Does the contract permit us to be able to do that is the question. Like if we were to say as a policy decision, we're going to reduce service in these areas because of the cost, et cetera. I'm hypothetical here. I'm not telling you anything is going to happen. I'm just asking. If we were to do that and to reduce that and make that decision, does that violate the contract in any way?
No, what we have to do, though, is do that at the contract negotiation timeframe, which is not in alignment with the budgetary timeframe. We negotiate the contract in January. And our budgetary year starts on July first. So our next opportunity to negotiate the contract is January. It's coming here. So we're trying to put that in alignment with the budget year. We kind of inherited, I inherited that coming in. So we want to do that in the future. But that's the point where we negotiate either additions of staff or additions of extra services. We do still have some opportunities to recover, obviously, the Uber lift fees, but we haven't received that amount from the state yet. I mean, Darlene has an estimate when the Treasurer's Office is going to provide us with that amount. But we have an estimate what that would be within our budget to help supplement the cost of operations. Those are the points where we negotiate, though, at the beginning of the calendar.
Okay, so may I follow up, Madam Chair?
You may.
Thank you. So I guess this is the part of it where I I struggle to not feel like a rubber stamp, right? Because if if we're being asked to appropriate funds and we're being told that we have some ability to do that, but then it sounds like these negotiations occurred back in January. And apologies for the noise. I think the Blue Angels are practicing up downtown in Annapolis. So if you hear that background, I'm sorry. But with that, so if if we have those funds and you're saying that these contracts have already been negotiated and these services have already been sort of doled out in January, and here we are in May, and you're asking us to fund that to continue. I hear you on the cuts in services, but are we in breach of contract if we fail to fund it? Are we going to have a default situation? Are we going to be sued by the vendor for failure to be able to comply with the obligations? Like what does that look like? Or is there an out, a contract that says this contract is contingent on approval by the county council, as many of these are?
So if there's a decision to unfund service, we'd have to come back to the negotiation table.
Okay.
So there's always an opportunity. But we obviously negotiate the cost of the contract at the beginning of the calendar year. But we can obviously go through central services and negotiate with them if there's an issue. And that comes to to anything. When it comes to non-performance, we can send a letter. If there's something we want to negotiate, there are opportunities within the contract clauses. But it would cause a disruption to service, sure, if we decrease the amounts of funding provided in the contract or put us in a shortfall situation in the last quarter of the year, we don't fully fund the contract. Be doing a transfer at that point.
And and my final question, is this the service that you indicated is being provided to South County residents that you're looking to expand to North County? Did I understand you correctly on what the services are?
No, those are both pre-existing.
Okay.
County services highly subsidized by the LDC grant. The South County service falls under the funds from General Fund operate. Those are all pre-existing. We we haven't expanded.
So but then, so this two million does what services? Where specifically are you serving?
We provide fixed route services, multiple lines from the northern part of the county down to the south. We have, you know, go back to that map, Darlene, and I could walk through each line if you like.
I I'm not going to make you do that again, but maybe we can just continue this where I can get a bit more of a breakdown of the two million and exactly what's being covered in there. So I don't want to spend all morning on this, but thank you.
Not a new different amount. I just want to clarify, council. Contract is to deliver all of the services. We didn't add two million dollars worth of service to our services. The COVID money only supplemented on budget. It didn't increase our operational capability. We have the same services that we did before. In fact, we cut our shopper shuttle service and that we replaced it with the qualified service. One for one. In terms of service growth, there isn't any anticipated based on this baseline budget. It's mostly just to continue operations.
For me, I'll just leave it there and maybe we can continue this offline. But thank you.
All right.
Ms. Hammer.
Yes, I just want to compliment y'all when we have so many services and departments and all parts of society that are still or just getting to pre-pandemic levels. Y'all have blown it out of the water. And so that's really a great testament to the to the work that we're doing to increase that transportation. Great to see those numbers of ridership. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, I think that concludes any questions regarding operating. Did y'all want to go ahead and move on to your capital?
Yes, please. All right. So our first slide is the long-range plan. Move in Anaromel. So why I wanted to highlight this and mention it is that this is where a lot of projects originate from. And there are component plans within the long-range plan that feed it. And there are component plans within the long-range plan that feed it. There's supportive road management plan, complete streets guidance, major intersections and important facilities. There's our transit development plan, which we're now developing our own, of course, which will be bringing to council. Um, our walk and roll plan, which is all of our bicycle pedestrian projects. And, um, our vision zero plan, which is a guidance document that actually feeds a lot of projects in all of these plans. Next slide, please. One of the, or the biggest project within our budget is the Odenton Mark T O D development, phase one and two A. This is a fifty-three million dollar Odenton Garage adjacent to Mark Train Station. It includes kiss and ride as well as bike parking and head bike connections leading up to the facility. We had an increase based on the estimate provided by Medco, state developer. And, uh, project will open up a lot of land for future development adjacent to the Odenton Mark Station. And really make it convert into a, a, a larger T O D. Can give opportunities, what makes you residential, commercial, whatever make up. Next slide, please. Our transportation ops facility is included in this year's budget. Last year, uh, you all approved the purchase of land to build our ops facility. Presently, our seven-four-nine location is being sold to become a T O D for the county. To bring development to the, the North County area. So we are relocating to an ops facility which has sufficient parking, us charging offices for our transit staff as well as our county operations staff. It would be a huge benefit to us to have this facility as well optimize our transit services. Next slide, please. Um, the Route Three Improvements Project will include the addition of a lane to better traffic flow in that area. Includes, um, acquisition of Right Away in the Watch Apple area. We're having in constant congestion issues in that area, which I experienced myself. So this, this would be really beneficial to the residents in this area for traffic flow purposes. And it can make, make those improvements, have people better driving experience in the area. Next slide, please. Uh, the Brooklyn Park Mobility Improvements Project i- is a series of improvements recommended by the Brooklyn Park Mobility Study, which is a really engaging, hands-on study where the community was engaged. There was a lot of fieldwork done. And these, these projects will allow for increased safety and connectivity, uh, within the Brooklyn Park area. Next slide, please. Forest Drive is one of, um, the quarters that we've had challenges with when it comes to safety. And, uh, I just want to highlight that this project provides a series of safety improvements along Forest Drive at a portion of Bay Ridge Road. City of Annapolis was recently actually awarded a Safe Routes or Safe Streets For All Grant to fund some smaller improvements to the project. The intent would be to partner with them and complete the short-term safety improvements that are easier to, um, implement. Just to get those safety improvements in and. Next slide, please. Stevenson Road Project, we initiated a number of sidewalk and intersection improvement projects in the past couple of C I Ps. We address both vehicle and pedestrian access, the new Severn Run High, High School and Old Middle, Middle Schools. These will allow walkers to gain access to these schools. And reduces the burden, uh, on county school bus service as a result. But it also provides connectivity for community members. Next slide. I just want to thank you for considering our capital and operating budget. Both up and down. I know there's a few questions about addition for capital projects.
Okay, I see Ms. Hummer has a question. If y'all could stop sharing your screen, I could see everybody. Oh, there are questions. Ms. Hummer.
Um, yes, the Route Three, um, improvements, what, what timeline are we looking at that for that?
Turn it over to Brian for the official timeline.
Yep, one second. So the, um, what's being added this fiscal year is for the addition. You saw the, the screen addition on Miller's Silver Red. There's a lane addition. You're going towards like a Rundle High School. There's only one lane through right now. It backs up. Uh, so it carried two lanes through that intersection to, to let some of the more those people through. Um, I would sit there and you might have to sit through a light. So that's the addition to the Route Three project, but as far as the larger, and that's the county addition, larger Route Three project. Yeah, we just signed the P T A to finish design. Design would be completed in. Would be complete i- at by the end of twenty-five, so then Right Away twenty-six and construction would start twenty-seven.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have the Blue Angels flying over me, so forgive the background noise. Um, I have a few questions. So we went over the Cypress, um, sidewalk. Safe routes to school. I know that there's, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in the budget. But I'm getting a lot of questions from my constituents on how we can see the proposed sidewalk, um, spans prior to construction. The five hundred thousand dollar funding, is any of that construction money? Or is that the process of reviewing, um, different schools?
That's all construction money that the first safe routes, and I believe our phase two are coming out of, uh, transportation facilities planning. So that school offsite that has its own C number. Um, that's all construct, well, designing construction right away. Um, if you go to the appendix, um, you can see the list of projects that's being worked on. And, and, and that goes for any of these multi-year projects. So if you look at the sidewalk, um, I think it's, give me one second. Can't talk and, and move at the same time. But anyway, if you look at the appendix section, it, it has a breakdown of those multi-year funds of the different projects that are in there. I don't know, Darlene, if you want to pull it up or, um, you can go to the offsite sidewalk section and see the projects that are in there. And then as well as sidewalk, right way, or I think the Cypress Creek is on the S H A sidewalk. Section. That makes sense. So C four, seven, eight, three hundred is the school sidewalks. If you go in the appendix section, you can see the active projects and kind of where, what the status is of those. And then the next one on the list. Um, so like in your area, I believe would be Arundel Beach Road. Is that correct? Would that be the Folger McKenzie? Is that your district? So that, you can see that's in there under design, uh, as an active project. But the list of active projects are in that appendix of the budget.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam Chair, may I ask?
You may.
Thank you. So the Arundel Beach Road Project, that was, um, in the budget from my understanding. If my memory is serving me correct, prior to the Safe Routes To School Initiative, because we talked about that funding last year, but the public meeting for Safe Routes To Schools for the study of Folger McKenzie and Broadneck Elementary only took place this year. So is there a way to identify in that appendix? The sidewalk sections that specifically came out of the Safe Routes To School Report and are separate from any school sidewalk projects that we already had in the pipeline?
Uh, yeah, I mean, as far as what's actually been funded out of that report, nothing new has been funded from the report as of yet. Uh, they would be in the planned section and fall into the queue. We have so many kind of projects we're already working on. But they would just be new projects added to that list, be funded in future years. But we can highlight, um, maybe, uh, or send you a list of the ones that are kind of added to that list out of that report. And we've done another report, phase two for additional schools coming this year, to begin this year.
Okay, so the.
On meetings will probably be next year for those.
Okay, so we won't see construction funds out of that Safe Routes To School Report until next year at the earliest.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, I can, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, all these projects, as you can tell, these are, you know, it takes years to get these things on the ground.
Understood. Just wanted to confirm that.
Did you have another question, Ms. Fiedler?
I do. Um, thank you. Uh, I do want to thank you all for your work on getting, um, some shelters at different bus stations in the area and for the new bus station on College Parkway. My question is, last year, when we were talking about, um, the maintenance of the, the trash receptacles at those bus stations, I know there was a, a fiscal, um, issue there. But my understanding was that we covered it in last year's budget. We did put additional money, um, there. We continue to have those trash receptacles issues. Um, College Parkway being a new station, we're already getting complaints of overflowing trash. What, what is the, the process or what is the schedule for trash, um, pickup at those bus stations?
So right now, we're in the process of reviewing R F Ps with the contracts office. It, it took time to get this out on the street as an R F P through our central services office. And now reviewing those R F Ps. Once we make a selection, um, we'll have a regular collection schedule. Other than that, we'll kind of have to keep doing it ad hoc like we have been. Councilwoman Fiedler, when you send us an email, I, I work with my staff, empty the receptacles. So, um, we go onsite in an ad hoc manner until, till we get this R F P selected using those funds that you had mentioned that were allotted at last year's budget. Fortunately, uh, it just took some time to let that R F P get, get the vendor. We, we wanted to, to develop the services.
Okay. And do we have an estimated time for the vendor to come online, whoever is chosen?
Once we have a P O, uh, they'll be able to be online and active.
We actually just made selection. We just made the selection. Yeah, we just got to work out the con- contract, sign the contract basically with the vendor. So it should be, you know, however long it takes to sign a contract, everyone is to sign it and have a kickoff meeting. The first thing we're doing is the trash can and trash.
By summer.
Uh, yes, and this summer we will definitely start.
Okay, that is really great information. I know, um, my constituents will really appreciate hearing that. Um, I have one final question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, Shore Acres Road, I know we put money in last budget for, um, to begin the feasibility study. But it seems like we're still not there. Um, what, what transpired in the last year that led to the delay in the feasibility study?
Uh, I would have to defer to D P W to exactly why, you know, what, what took so long. I can give you a status update of exactly where we are. Give me one second. I, I know, I just, I just had an email on this recently, so, uh, so we had the, the kickoff meeting, those were, so, the design has been started, but, but they just started in April, so.
So it did start in the.
Determined process to go through, um, purchasing and follow the rules and so, and so the selection, all that stuff. So it, it did start in April then.
Oh, the actual study started in April?
The design, yes, the, or the study, right.
Okay.
It's a study in like fifteen percent design.
That is very helpful. So it did, some portion of it did start in this fiscal year. That's, that's what I was looking for. So thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of different questions about different projects, but first I want to start with a, a, a thank you and a, uh, word of appreciation. You are always so, um, responsive and timely and provide incredibly detailed answers when I have questions that I need to ask from constituents. And so I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. Um, certainly makes my job easier and I know, I think, I think people appreciate it. So just wanted to start with that. Um, but a couple of different project questions. Um, one is, I had received a letter of support from folks in Crofton, the, the, the Crofton Civic Association. We're in, in regarding, um, the shared path proposal that would be from four fifty to Bell Branch Park. And I'm just curious, is that in here somewhere? I, I might be missing it because I'm just not looking for the right words. Um, if you could point me in the right direction. Or if it's not in there, do you have an idea of when that might end up in the budget in the future?
Yeah, it, I believe, let me just find it. Um, I believe it's in the, uh, the, again, the appendix, those multi-year projects, there's a H five, six, three, seven hundred. Pedestrian improvements, S H A. Uh, you'll see those planned projects that are just getting kicked off. The first one on there is that Maryland to the Cypress Creek that hasn't been started. The last project on that list is Maryland four twenty-four, four fifty to Bell Branch. So it's in there, but it's not actively being worked on. So it's, it's in there for the program, but not for the fiscal year, if that makes sense.
Okay. So not for this fiscal year?
Right.
Is there, obviously, I'm, I'm not, would never intend to hold you to this because I understand the way things flex and change. But is there a timeline of what fiscal year, um, approximately?
We programmed out the fun. So the multi-year projects, we kind of went through and did more detail. Have, have a separate program for each of those that we can, I think we can share with you. Um, I, David and D P W has done that. We'll, we'll, we'll give you, I don't have it up right now, but I can give you the ballpark of where that falls into program.
That would be absolutely amazing. I appreciate it. Um, Madam Chair, if I may continue?
You may.
Thank you. Um, the projects on two fourteen, um, both Lock Haven. All of those projects down in that area with two fourteen, um. Are there any updates that you guys can share? I obviously have a very interested community. Um, I know you gave me an update a couple of months ago, but I've been asked to, you know, inquire if there is anything new. I think the general concern in the community is, number one, the details of the project, but even more so, um, the, a lot of the funding or majority of the funding is coming from the state. Um, and there's, you know, lots of curiosity about whether or not will that really be forthcoming and how that might affect the timeline.
Uh, so for the sidewalk project by the high school, that's already under construction. Now it's funded and moving. The one in Mayo from four sixty-eight East. Again, that had a thirty percent design, had that public meeting, I think it was, uh, this spring, maybe it was fall. Uh, so we're about, their estimate is about forty percent design. Um, and, and looking for, uh, sixty percent this fall and, and then completed next year. That's progressing as far as the design. They are doing some alternatives based on some of those public comments that we got. Uh, looking at, at a couple of access issues and, and different things, again, based on either property owner or community concerns. So they're, you know, updating the design as we go. So the design is on, uh, it's fully funded. It's actually fully funded by the county. Um, but yes, the Right Away Utilities and Construction, we're looking for that eighty-twenty county, uh, federal funding split. But yes, the right away utilities and construction, we're looking for that eighty-twenty county uh federal funding split. It's not been specifically allocated, but the the design funding is is been, is completely allocated, so. Uh that's one of those ones where we're looking to set up the agreement, you know, in the coming months, so that there is not a delay between. Uh the completion of the design, we don't have to wait to set up the funding for the next phase. That that has not been specifically done though, and so we are trying to uh keep pressure on the state to to dedicate this one to nail that out.
Thank you so much. Um. The Pulling House Rock Ranch, um. I see the money allocated for plans and engineering. Is there a timeline for when um? Folks might be able to expect construction to begin?
Uh that that would be handled by DPW, they they have the projects, um so they would be able to give you an update. I'm not sure when their presentation is.
I I'll follow up with them. Sometimes I get my lines crossed when it comes to the roads. I think you have seen my emails before, so.
I understand.
Understand, and then last but not least, um kind of a recurring question, topic of conversation that comes up when I'm in that part of the community. Governor's Bridge Road, um, I think I asked the same question last year, but again, I I I get this on repeat. Essentially, is that ever going to open?
Eventually it will. Um we just did this past year, I guess, the TIP amendment, finally got. Kind of that agreement with the state and the uh county, PG County, and and to get the design going. So it it is, we can also get you a an updated schedule for that one. I don't have it handy, uh again, and it's a DPW thing, but. We can get you the schedule, but it is, it is eventually gonna reopen.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Do we have any other questions for transportation regarding their capital budget at this time? Okay, I think that concludes the council inquiry into uh the Department of Transportation's budget.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us today. Just as a housekeeping note to colleagues, uh, my plan was to to move forward with Central Services. And then take the pulse for a a short break before we um continue with OIT and Wreckin Parks. Is that? Give me a thumbs up if that works for you. I see one, okay, great. Uh, would love to see us transition to Central Services, Ms. Susan Harold. Welcome. Good morning.
Morning. Kyle Madden with the Budget Office, the Budget Analyst for Central Services. You can find their budget on page one fourteen of your budget book. And here's Susan Harold to go through her budget.
Thanks, Kyle. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the County Council, Madam Auditor. Again, I'm Susan Harold, uh the Central Services Officer, and with me is Nicole Clinton, the Deputy Central Services Officer. And Kate Dawson, our Senior Management Assistant. Um and I would like to start uh by thanking the Budget Office for their guidance, specifically Kyle and Naomi. Uh with their assistance um this past budget season. As a reminder, um Office of Central Services is comprised of an administration section, purchasing. Facilities management, real estate, risk management, fleet administration. In short, Central Services is responsible for ensuring that the functions of county government have what they need to accomplish their mission. So I'm going to go over some highlights for um our FY twenty-five operating budget. Um Facilities Management is where we're going to start, and that can be found on page one nineteen um of the budget book. Um in our budget this year, we are requesting a reclassification um. Of an MA two to a Senior Management Assistant in Facilities. Um the roles and responsibilities of this position have become much more than general administrative. She serves really as almost a deputy level in this division. Um and I believe this was approved by the Office of Personnel, so we are requesting the funding um for this reclassification. Um FMD's custodial responsibilities have increased this year with the addition of the Severance Center. Uh which requires custodial services seven days a week, as well as additional services. At the Harry Truman Complex and Glen Burnie Town Center. We are also terminating a vendor due to performance issues, um which will result in a more expensive contractor. Um also, the custodial vendors expect to have and pass on to the county a CPI increase this year. Um due to mandated minimum wage increases. Um pest control is covered in this um area, um and we have increased pest control. Um with the addition of the Crownsville Properties, the Grain Elevator, the Severance Center. And in FY twenty-five, the Herald Harbor Fire Station will come online. Grounds Maintenance um includes, um as you can guess, mowing, mulching, tree maintenance. Um we have again included um Crownsville, um the wastewater treatment plant property. Um Severance Center is also um now part of our responsibility. And in FY twenty-five, Herald Harbor Fire Station will come online. Um again, a vendor contract is under negotiation and will be higher cost in FY twenty-five. Plus, um you know, due to a new vendor and a twelve percent CPI increase for another vendor. These services are critical to FMD's horticulture operation. We receive, and many of you know this, that we receive many complaints. Um from citizens about trees, especially on trust properties. Um that may infringe on um our county citizens' properties. Um the spending is also used to remove trees that are hazardous. Um. Our internal horticulture team is made up of five positions. They've taken on as much as they can and um we will. Um probably always require vendor assistance on these um our tree um assignments. So the um our ask is um a recurring fund of funding of four hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh for FY twenty-five. Also, underground maintenance, we have consulted with IMP regarding the condition of sediment ponds. And bio-retention areas on county property. In order to remediate current conditions of the bio-retention areas and to continue the ongoing maintenance, we've requested a one-time. And recurring funding. The one-time funding, which will, we will go through and do a general um cleanup. Um is a hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, and the recurring funding is sixty-one thousand dollars for ground maintenance ongoing. Thank you, Kate. We've also asked for equipment for county events, tables, tents and chairs. Um these get used routinely. Um I think there's also some broken uh custodial equipment that uh we will need to replace. FMD has managed the operating operational budget for the Crownsville Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant since it was transferred from the state. DPW is acting as a vendor and has taken over as the operator of the plants. Uh providing significant savings over our previous vendor MES. Um so just to clarify, they are acting as a vendor. They, um this money does not go into, um we pay you, we pay DPW as if they were the vendor. They have not taken it over as part of it, uh county utility. Due to environmental issues, pumping and hauling of daily sewage outflow is required until the capital project is able to secure the site. And make appropriate repairs. The operational pumping and hauling estimate for FY twenty-five. Is based on an average flow of approximate two hundred and eighty thousand gallons per week. So recurring funding of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for pumping and hauling is requested in FY twenty-five. We are also requesting one-time funding for repairs and renovation projects. In addition to, we're asking for an additional five hundred thousand dollars in addition to a recurring three hundred thousand dollars. The type of projects covered by these funds include furniture and carpet replacement, office refurbishments. Buildings refreshes that are sometimes badly needed in the areas of the county. These are large unplanned projects that may need immediate attention. We have a backlog of these types of projects. Um due to fluctuating funding over the years. So the next section we'll talk about is real estate. Um. The um Office of Central Services is, sorry, I lost my, there, Kate, here we go. In negotiation with lease space for the state at the forty-four Calvert Street. We had negotiated with them to purchase new furniture. They will turn around and refund. Um and reimburse the county for the ninety-six thousand dollars in furniture. So this is money out, money back in. Risk management has continued to seek recovery on third-party claims. In fact, in FY twenty-four, so far, risk management has recovered. Over a million dollars in subrogation. Under the Self-Insurance Fund, we are asking uh Falls Our Safety Team, and we are asking to reclassify. Um to the safety coordinators, to senior coordinators. Um this will recognize their expertise in countywide responsibility as uh many of the programs that they. Um enact um benefit the entire county and um actually supervise other safety people throughout the county. Next slide. The Garage Operating and Vehicle Replacement Fund, um. The first is, um, we have requested an auto mechanic one. Right now, we have a temporary employee, uh part-time, temporary fifteen hundred hours that we cannot fill. To serve the role um as a tow truck driver. Uh we are hoping that the addition of a merit position will um serve two purposes. The first is, will help us with our recruitment for this position, and secondly. Uh while the position is vacant, if a tow is necessary, they'd have to take a supervisor out of the garage. To go pick up the vehicles and it um decreases the um. The service uh that's provided in the garage. So we're hoping that the addition of this will help on on both of those fronts. Under Vehicle Replacement, which is on page one hundred and twenty-three. Uh recent updates in the vehicle policy require that all new vehicle purchases for departments will be budgeted and purchased by the Fleet Administration. These types of vehicle purchases were previously budgeted in other departments as approved. Um as part of the total budget um addition to the fleet, um we're asking for two new additions. Um funding for vehicles under this fund also allows replacement for twenty-seven vehicles that were totaled uh in the fiscal year. Uh which it does include any um anticipated cost increase to prices, car prices. Um total budget request also replaces a hundred and twenty vehicles countywide, uh and that's for scheduled replacement. That includes our operating budget. Does, are there any questions? Or at least we can roll on to capital.
I do not see any questions. Let me give it one minute for council members to. I don't see any questions on your operating, Ms. Harold. Um if you wanted to move along, uh if a council member has. Last call. Okay, looks like we're ready for capital.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, some of these are just um updates. Um there's not really any new programming. The first is the Underground Storage Tank Replacement. There's no change in funding. Uh we've just added um funding to the out year in FY thirty. Uh the second is Fund forty-four thirty-five. This is sort of what we call our bread and butter. It's the heart of what we do at Facilities Management. This is for the renovation, replacement, rehabilitation, accounting facilities and systems. Um to bring up to current standards. Um a lot of these requests come from the departments themselves or our tenants. Or cover building, building system, equipment or failures. Um this year in FY twenty-four, we are working on approximately three point three million dollars worth of projects. In FY twenty-five, if our request is funded, we'll prioritize about two million dollars worth of projects. So rest assured, we will always have a backlog uh under this fund. Some of the projects that are covered by this fund is windows, doors, bathrooms, painting. Uh general renovation. Fifty-three seventy-eight is county facilities and system upgrades. You can find that on page thirty. These are large-scale, multi-year projects, oftentimes done with our partners in DPW because they may require engineering. Uh the programming, the regular programming for this fund is six and a half million dollars annually. On FY twenty-five, we are requesting nine point eight three million, which is still less than we received in FY twenty-four. The FY twenty-five project list, as it stands, is estimated at about twenty million dollars. So again, we will continue to have a backlog and prioritize as emergencies and um necessity. Uh shows itself. Some projects will be delayed, um and we have seen that. Um and we have experienced, as everyone else in the county, cost increases due to materials and supplies. These large projects um are typically like HVAC systems, large plumbing. Uh systems, elevators, fire alarms, very large projects, again, that require assistance uh from DPW. Um fifty-seven one seven hundred is parking garage repair and renovation. This is the repair and renovation of Whitmore and Glen Burnie garages. Uh once this project started, it was discovered that the garage. Specifically Whitmore was in much worse shape than previously known. Uh the increased funding request reflects the additional work and your schedule, as well as the cost escalation. The Millersville Garage renovation, uh there's no change in the programming um for this project. This is we, the update for the Millersville Garage, once the fire equipment maintenance facility. Which is the next um fund below that is um completed. So um this is uh the fire equipment maintenance facility, and again, is to um design and construct a new garage. Uh St. Glen Burnie, land has been purchased for this, um. And it will be used specifically for fire equipment. The design is ongoing now and construction should begin in FY twenty-five. There's no other programming changes uh for this project. The next is EV charging stations and other green technology. Um Central Services is working uh on this project with our partners at the Resilience Authority and DPW. Funding has been added to FY thirty as we continue to work on the plan for infrastructure and policies. Around transitioning to an electric fleet. Um there was an RFP, and I believe a vendor is close to being selected. To um install additional charging stations around the county for the infrastructure project. The next is Circuit Courthouse Major Renovation. This is ongoing. Um it's a multi-year. In FY twenty-four. Uh the work has included fire alarms, fire pumps, elevator refreshers. Um water booster pumps and water lines, and for FY twenty-five, we expect to. Uh do bathroom remodels, the courthouse front door, roofing, heating and cooling pumps. More elevator replacements and air handling unit replacements. And then the ADA retrofit and installation, there's no changes, it's just adding funding. To um the out years, and again, there was a report done in uh two thousand twenty-two. Um a self-assessment and um. Facilities Maintenance works in conjunction with um the Department of Aging and Disabilities to identify projects. Um to be ADA compliant. CSSC uh water supply, um this is a. This is affectionately known as the Warehouse in Millersville. The building is used by Police Special Ops, FMD's headquarters, Fire Quartermaster, OEM, Rack and Parks, the school system, and Police K-9. There is currently no potable water for the building, but the largest issue is the fire suppression tanks. So the well water is causing corrosion on the tanks. And last year, we put in a capital project to bring water to the building from, I think, on the other side of ninety-seven. There was some cost escalation in this project. They had to move the line of where the water's going to come through, so that would be reflected in this funding. The County Septic System and County Septic System Assessment, this is for non-residential septic systems. FMD would like to do a project to complete assessments in the county's systems, document the systems across the county, and the conditions, the locations, which will influence future requests for capital programming and repair or replacement. Currently, we are working on a project with DPW to replace Downs Park and Lake Waterford Park's septic systems. A lot of these are old, and we just think it's a good idea to catalog the systems and get out in front of any environmental mishaps. Glenburne Plaza redevelopment, this is a new project to redevelop the Glenburne Town Center Plaza. The county will partner with the Resilience Authority to manage this project. Funding is also coming from a federal grant. And the Multicultural Center, this is a new project to study, identify, and develop a center that promotes diversity, inclusivity, and cultural awareness in the county. County is also receiving five million dollars straight state grant for this project. And I believe that concludes our capital projects. Any questions?
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Harold. That was a lot.
It was a lot.
Yeah, you guys have a big purview. So I wanted to hone in on one particular project that is of note to me, which is the Circuit Court renovations and what's going on over there. I know that's, as you put it, a multi-year project. Just looking at that and understanding the way that the capital program is structured, you're doing a lot of that now, and I think you guys are trying to work a lot of those things through. How many of those projects that you're working on are absolute necessities? Like, have to be done to ensure the facility functions at the level that it should function?
Well, I know that I could probably, I would probably defer to our partners in DPW who are running this. But I would say that the roofing, the heating, cooling, all of that is pertinent to, you know, sort of life and safety and comfort. Do the bathrooms need to be done? I don't know if David wants to weigh in. And certainly, the fire alarm was very important.
You don't have to weigh in on the bathrooms. I'm familiar with them.
Okay. Maybe it's sport initiative that I'm not, so.
Fair.
Do you have any information?
Well, I think you outlined it. If you remember, Mr. Volkey, what we had started a couple of years ago was really the HVAC and the seriousness of getting some of those things taken care of quickly. That has obviously morphed. Plus, when we start working in the area, everybody has their other ideas of what needs to be done. I don't have a specific breakdown of what's critical and what's not at this point. I would say, in general, the first three years of the program are the critical issues that need to be addressed right now, that we had spread funding out. But we can get you a breakdown of what we have identified for each of these programs through FY twenty-eight, I think it is. So we can talk about it that way.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you very much. I have another question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, different project. So the Fire Equipment Maintenance Facility. This is the project that is going to be on Route Two on that property that we purchased, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and I know my colleague, Councilwoman Fiedler, is probably thinking, man, what's he gonna ask? Because it's in her district. But that being said, on that site, so the reason I'm asking this is, sort of simultaneously with this, we're working on that Region Four plan. In terms of where you're going to locate that building, I've talked to Councilwoman Fiedler, and she, I know, has some information on this. But can you speak a little bit about what the site plan is going to look like for that facility, just so that we get a full picture, both from a budget standpoint, but also from a planning standpoint?
I'm, again, going to defer to David, if you would.
Yeah.
There was some discussion.
Yeah, David Braun, Department of Public Works. We have just recently finished the thirty percent design of this to kind of identify the concept. And in general, the concept is for the facility to be centered on the site while we leave both forest conservation and environmental buffers to the north and to the south. We're still working with SHA about access locations. But in general, I would anticipate that the the center, half to two-thirds of the property, is what's going to end up being cleared and developed.
And can you elaborate on what it will look like from the street? Like, if I'm driving along Route Two, what am I going to see when I go past this facility?
I think what I would prefer to do is dig into the thirty percent plans that we have and maybe forward to you guys the renderings that they've provided to date. It'll be easier than trying to describe it.
Ms. Fiedler, have you seen those yet?
I have. I can send them to you. What Mr. Braun has described is accurate. The buffers are on opposite ends with the design in the center.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any further questions for Central Services? Okay. No, I think you're getting off easy, Ms. Harold. At this time, I would like to propose a break before we head into OIT and Recreation and Parks. Do folks feel like thirty minutes is appropriate? Any dissent? Any thirty minutes?
Fine.
Flexible.
All right, that puts us coming back, going into recess for a little bit, coming back at twelve-thirty. And then we can get, finish out the afternoon with OIT and Rack and Parks. Madam Secretary, does that work?
That works. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Shall we do a roll call? Do we think we have everybody?
I'm happy to do a roll call if you'd like.
Then we'll get started with OIT.
Great. Let's go for it. Mr. Smith? Hopefully soon. Ms. Pickard?
Here.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Ms. Hummer? Just saw her. Welcome back, Ms. Fiedler? I know Ms. Fiedler was rejoining from her phone. Ms. Rodvian?
I'm here, and apologies if you hear some very, very loud airplanes in the background today.
And Ms. Ledbetter? It looks like we still have a few people joining, Madam Chair. And Madam Auditor?
Present.
Okay, it looks like we've got almost everybody. Good afternoon, Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon.
We might have some council members coming back to us, but we are ready for your presentation.
Hey, fantastic. Kyle, do you want to start?
Good afternoon. I'm Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. I'm the Budget Analyst for IT. Their budget can be found on page one sixty-seven of the proposed budget book, and I'll turn it over to Jack for his presentation.
Thank you, Kyle. And thank you, Council, Madam Chair, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about our OIT budget, FY twenty-five request. With me today, I am Jack Martin, CIO, and with me today is Mike Tarquinho, Deputy CIO, as well as Kay Hoffman-Stiles, our Senior Admin. I'll share my screen, do a short presentation. That's good. Okay. So, talk a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about our OIT mission. Our mission is to provide the right tools, technologies, and data, right time and the right place. To do this, we need to be coherent, trusted, and driven to provide great service for our customers. It's really saying three primary things. We need to get the tools to our employees to do the job they need to do. They need it wherever they are, the right time and the right place. So we have lots and lots of buildings, many, many buildings, plus field employees who need to be connected. So we need to get them the tools where they are so they can do their job. And we need to be trusted so that when we offer our advice, offer solutions, that the customers believe us and want to do what we advise. Let me move on and talk about trends affecting IT. This affects certainly our budget, but affects our work every day. So these are just some overview kind of issues. We have more and more mobile devices. We think that's a great move for the county. And as I said, we're getting the tools into the hands of the people who are doing the work, and we're getting it closer to where the work is getting done. That means that we'll have more data and more quality data to provide the kind of backbone for information future for the county, and I think, and better informed decision-making from these toolsets. We also have about twice the number of applications that we used to support. There are certainly procurement requirements with this. We work closely with the Law Office of Law and with the Purchasing Department to do all the updates and renewals for these applications. We appreciate all their support with that. There are certainly, oh, all the management and maintenance and costs are centralized in IT. So probably ninety-eight percent of all IT is in this single budget. I mentioned this, and I mentioned it last year, because most of our surrounding jurisdictions have IT items throughout their budget. But here, for better or worse, you get a kind of single view of all IT activities, and they're all located in our budget. About sixty percent of our capital request this year is for replacement of two older systems. So when you're looking at our capital request, just keep that in mind. It's really about replacement of two enterprise systems, our financial system, which is from the last century, actually. It's from then, was designed and built in the nineties and put in place right around Y two K here at the county, and also replacement of the CAD system. We have also expanded programs in network TV, CCTV, security. And every time we expand our reach, we're providing more services. There are costs associated with increasing, improving that service. So on this side, I'd like to talk about how we organize our project areas. These are what we call our focus areas. These four areas are cloud, application backbone, public safety, constituent-centric services, and securing the enterprise. So when we look at projects and potential needs, we try to make sure that they fit into one of these categories. When we're looking in these categories, we need all of these services to work together, to fit together, and provide a, you know, kind of integrated approach to solutions for our customers. Under the cloud application backbone, I'll just point out some of the highlights, which is direct connectivity to Equinix, which is, it's a fiber backbone directly into Ashburn, Virginia, that we're leasing. It's a very, very important part of our service because more and more of our county services are located in the data centers in Northern Virginia. And this brings us right into that neighborhood, which is great. Also, we're doing more and more work in AWS cloud servers and solutions. We have, we're growing the Acela Lawn Project. We've got Viewworks Asset Management for DPW, a little bit for Rack and Park, also Central Services, that's located in our AWS cloud. And some various public safety reporting systems are also up there. Under public safety, we've been improving a public safety incident response capability through improvements in CAD. We're doing CAD, helping with the CAD-to-CAD interface, and also with the radio improvements, which I'll talk more about later, with the new radio system that has just gone live for police and fire. And improved public safety reporting with the new reporting systems. We've also been supporting the body camera and expansion of those associated programs and integrated interview rooms that go along with that, helping to modernize and extend CCTV coverage, as well as mobile CAD application, which supports mostly fire, but also some police, by giving them CAD calls, the ability to access CAD calls right on their cellphone. With constituent-centric services, we've got the South County Fiber Project, which I'll talk about a little bit later, but that'll wrap up this calendar year. Network fiber to connections to senior centers, parks, and schools, replacing aged PEG equipment and dramatically changing the team sports applications to provide better customer support in both team sports and in childcare in those applications, and working with the inspections and permits, planning and zoning, and also Public Works a little bit on the lawn program. For securing the enterprise, we're improving security assessments, replacing out-of-support network and computer equipment. That's really important because, once it's out of support, it can't be patched. You can't receive security patches any longer, and we need to replace those items. Move services to the cloud were appropriate, extending CCTV coverage to help protect county facilities and personnel. Have some exciting breakthroughs in that area, and also replacement of the financial system. By replacing that, we'll be able to put a more secure solution in place. So start talking about the budget highlights. On the operating side, we've seen a sizable increase, as the county executive mentioned during his briefing. But that's mostly because of projects successfully moving from the capital side of funding to the operating side. So it's really good news, and so we're happy to see that. The dominant one in that area is the Motorola project. We've also seen some inflation effects with software increases, and of course, personnel costs that we're probably seeing in all county areas. Besides the Motorola project, moving from capital to operating, we've also had a sizable portion of the Acela or Lawn project moving into operating. We've seen, and just general software, between three and twenty percent increases, but most of them are between five and eight percent. When it's in the county contract, it's typically CPI, and so we can manage it that way. There are, of course, some salary increases which are increasing our costs. Are there any questions on operating? Before I move on, the rest of the presentation is capital-focused, but I'm happy to take any questions now on operating, or I can take them all at the end.
I believe we have some questions. I cannot see everybody on my screen. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, afternoon, Mr. Martin. Sorry, we're in afternoon. So, looking at the first slide that you presented, you had put in there where you talked about the customers who you're serving and the mission statement for. So, looking at the first slide that you presented, you had put in there where you talked about the customers who you're serving and the mission statement for OIT. Is your primary customer county government and sort of county employees, or do you see your primary customers as being the public at large?
Each, so I have kind of a project perspective, so it depends on the project, right? And so, in some ways, we are a support service, so we need to make sure that county offices have, you know, all the, all the county departments have the tools that they need, but we do have direct interface with the public, but not as much as other agencies, so I, you know, if I may be allowed, I'd like to say, I look at it in both ways. One of the ways that we, besides serving all the departments with things like, you know, the police department with body cameras, or with the radio, right? If, if our public safety personnel have the best radio system possible, then they're, you know, better able to serve the public. But some of the ways that we work directly interfacing the public would be the website, and any of the tools that are accessible through there, which we are working on expanding.
Okay.
But I, well, the work we do doesn't, doesn't really compare to like, say, Public Works, or, you know, especially the permits and planning.
Understood, and so obviously, you all try to cultivate that level of trust, and I get that, and you have internal people that you work with, you have external people. With respect to internal people, do you have any protocols in place that direct or sort of protect, if you will, the sort of ability of other people in county government to obtain email communications on county resources, whether that be county email, whether it be, you know, search history, browsing history, things like that? What does that look like in terms of your policies and procedures as to who in county government is able to get that information?
We refer all those requests to the Office of Law.
So if a request comes into your department for you to produce some sort of email, you would immediately contact Office of Law to get their feedback on that?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there a particular person in the Office of Law that your department deals with?
I, I talked to Greg, but they do have, I think that's, that's changing and processed, but I, I refer it to Greg, and then he gives it to whoever's appropriate.
Okay. So who actually is it that would pool any kind of email communication or internal comms?
Somebody from the Law Office.
So it would not be your department?
That's correct, we, we have, we bought, we purchased the system with the Law Office, Exterro, and then they, they would pull things through that, and they have access to the Google, that Google. Now, they can, they can work directly with somebody from our office, sometimes they do. They, under the instruction of the Law Office, they can help them find an email or something like that, but they also have the ability to go directly themselves, and that's the way we prefer it.
So to be clear, there would be no circumstance in which you or a member of your office would pool emails directly and provide them to someone in county government, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. And so, with that understanding, do you have that in a policy somewhere, or is that written somewhere internally for your department to direct how you would deal with inquiries like this?
We use public information request policy for that.
Okay, so you don't have your own internal policy or your own internal procedures, you simply refer to the PIA procedures?
Correct, we can work on a policy as, if that's appropriate, happy to do so, we've been updating and working on new policies in a number of areas.
Okay, got it. With respect to county personnel, specifically classified county personnel, do they have any expectation of privacy in their communications when they are using county apparatus such as email or internal, internal communication devices?
I don't, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure, do county employees who are in the classified service, so not appointed employees, not people who are serving at the pleasure of somebody else, people who have classified service time, do they have any reasonable expectation of privacy in the communications that they have via email?
No.
Okay.
Policy on email, they have no expectation of privacy in county email.
Okay, and do they sign something or acknowledge something noting that when they start employment with the county?
Yes, and every time they log on, you probably notice when you log on, your user acceptance policy, that's in there as well.
Okay, got it, and so if I were to ask you to pool emails for me of someone who's in the classified service, your response to me would be what?
I would go to the Law Office.
Okay, so you would not directly fulfill that, you would send me to the Office of Law, who would then deal with that as a PIA request?
Yes.
Okay, and there are no circumstances in which you have independently fulfilled requests like that for county employees?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Ms. Hammer.
Yes, thank you very much. I will have to say, a lot of this, I trust that y'all know what you're doing, because it is Greek to me. So I appreciate all of your expertise. I have another question about county emails, or just our, our data retention in general, how long do we, how long do you, in, in the cloud, how long do we save communications?
So each department has their own policy, I believe yours is five years.
Oh, it's five years.
Five years for County Council, correct, as well as the administration.
And so that is, so it's unique to each department, is there a reason why it's unique to each department?
Yes, and I am, I am not the expert in records retention, but we, I do know that we report, every, all of us actually file a report with the State of Maryland Archives, and that's where we determine what our policy is. Electronic retention is just a sub-part of your overall retention policy, and it's all spelled out in those retention policies, which can be and should be regularly updated. I'm telling myself as well, not you, and we keep those refreshed. We have changed them frankly over the years, you know, we've had more years of retention and then fewer, and now we're, we're kind of in the middle. You know, it, it's whatever suits your needs, we, we did, we did raise it a few years ago because we found that, like, Public Works say their, their project timeframe needed more years, right, I mean, they could easily have a five-year project, so if we had a two-year retention, it wasn't meeting their needs, so there are all kinds of considerations that come into effect there.
So you'd have to look at these, is, is some of, are some of those retention links tied to just the cost of preserving all this information? I mean, do we have enough in our budget to retain all of the information that we need to on the cloud? Because I know things that, we get a lot of county communications. Do we have the funding to make sure that we are saving things for as long as we need to?
We do, that's a great question, I'm glad you realize that there is a cost to that, there's a cost to all of this, and we, it is in our budget, and we can retain it, and there is a cost to it, and we cover that.
We cover that, so could you tell me, do you know, just off the top of your head, I know that they're all different for every department, but you said, like, our department is five years, what's some of the shortest retention? What would be a department that might have a very short retention phase?
I know we in IT used to have a thirteen-month retention, and that was too short, so we have.
So you think most places probably have a year or six months?
I think probably most are between two and five years for most departments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just following it up on Councilwoman Hammer's questions there, Mr. Martin, do you have a sort of consolidated place that we could look where we see all the retention policies for all the departments, is that something your staff keeps?
We do keep that.
Okay, and is that something that you'd be able to provide to Madam Auditor?
Certainly.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
It's a sheet, right, with each department listed, and then the retention timeframe for email, is that the, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martin, you had mentioned in the beginning of your presentation that different jurisdictions handle OIT services differently, ours seem to be quite centralized, and do you have any thoughts on, so, you know, it looks like you have this, you know, ginormous budget, but it's, you know, you're, you're holding a lot of different departments, IT services, do you, do you think that's something we should, we should continue in that vein, or should we be working towards? I don't know, is that decentralizing OIT, I don't know, what do you think?
I think it's working, I think it's working well, I, it would be probably appropriate to ask our customers how they think it's working, but I think it gives, it gives the administration and the council that centralized view that if you, if you probably talk to some of our colleagues in surrounding jurisdictions, they, they probably, some of them probably wish they had that view. So then, it also makes sure that OIT is aware, so there are, we try to prevent too much shadow IT, so shadow IT can result in, you know, projects that we didn't know about, and expenditures, you know, that are really IT expenditures. What happens is that if somebody starts an IT project, and IT doesn't know about it, eventually, it's going to hit the fan, and we're going to need to fix something, because something breaks, and then we find out about it, and we don't find out about it until it breaks. So it is good for IT to be aware of these things, and there's no better way probably for us to be aware than to have the funding in our budget. I think if the county group, you know, say fifty percent bigger than we are now, then, then we would need to reassess that, because there would be, you know, so many different things going on out in, say, satellite areas that are IT-related, that the value of having centralized IT might be lessened.
Thank you, and I just have one, one other question, unless my colleagues have more questions during, about operating. I had the distinct privilege to moderate cybersecurity workshop at Summer Mako a couple of years ago, no idea why I was selected to do that, because I had no idea what anybody was talking about. But one thing did stick in my mind, and that's we were all pretty, it was pretty clear that local jurisdictions around the state are not putting enough resources into cybersecurity. I think someone was saying, someone on the panel was saying, three percent of our overall budget should be dedicated to, to cybersecurity, do you think we have work to do in that department, should be protecting our, our data and better?
So I seldom, I tend to not talk too much in public about IT security, I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline. I do think there is good work for us to do, and I look forward to doing it. One of the biggest things in that area that I'd love to see happen is we requested the funding for a SISO position, and that would be somebody that's an actual county IT employee who would help us, you know, formalize.
Is it just me, or are you frozen?
That's what I think freezes.
Too many.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I think he's making a good pitch for his budget right there.
That is pretty laughable. CIO's screen freezes, anyway. So I, I, I don't know where that ended, but we have requested funding for a SISO position, and that would help us further formalize our efforts in IT security, I think there is great work we can do in that area, and there's just a lot more work. The, you know, before we worked with the state, because there were benefits, now it's required that we work with the state. It's required that we respond to federal regulations around, you know, being a water utility. And so there's just a lot more work, you know, our biggest audit years ago in this area was our financial audit, and now that's just, that's a minor one compared to all the other efforts we have, and there is a lot of work there.
Thank you, makes sense for you not to talk about our cybersecurity risk.
Happy to talk to you all about it in person.
Great, do we have any other questions for OIT's operating budget? Am I right to assume you also have a? Oh, gosh.
Yes, we'll go, I, I have the potential to go over our seven capital-funded programs.
Thank you, you make proceed, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so. Turn up my other screen. And so on the capital side, we have three large enterprise IT projects requiring funding, so all these are enterprise-level and very, very important. The financial system upgrade, the CAD system replacement, and the ongoing ADP upgrades, which we're using capital funding for, that was granted to us last year. So we're also continuing the Arctic program, it's mostly a police program, but we're supporting it with IT support, and the funding for their base program goes through our budget. The radio system, which as I mentioned, is a big success, and a lot of work, years of work, and funding went into that, that Police and Fire just went live last month in the new system, and we're very, very happy that they're up and running on the new system with the, more than double the number of towers transmitting to them, so that's, that's a great project. We're very happy to have it live. Also, the detention system upgrade, which is a required upgrade, we plan to do that this year, but we will need to do it next year because the vendor was not ready. Also, there are some MUNIS system upgrades that are required, and we will be utilizing carryover funding to accomplish some of these things. We move on to the next. So this is the overview with the out-years of our seven current capital programs. We have had six historically, there is a new one, I'll talk about that in just a minute. But if, if anybody, if nobody has questions on out-years, I'll go to the next slide, which has more.
I don't, I don't see any questions, but if colleagues have questions, they can chime in now?
Okay, I can always come back to that, so let me talk a little bit about our six, these six funded programs, the cable TV program, the fiber network program, which allows us to extend fiber into new county locations, and maintain the schools, the senior centers, more in parks, things like that. Wired broadband access, which is the inactive project, but no funding is required, we will finish that this calendar year. And so we're basically wrapping that up, there's still some hard work to do, but we don't need any additional funding. The new project we have is new capital projects called DSP, which is difficult to serve properties. That is a new grant-funded program through the State of Maryland, which will allow us, it's also sometimes called the Long Draw, Driveways Grant, because it will help us connect to homes where there is cable service on the roadway in front of their home, but they were not connected, typically because their driveway was longer than the providers would connect. So in this grant, we have the opportunity to, to connect hundreds of homes through this grant. It's a great opportunity for us and for citizens, and it's, it's a shared funding. So in each one of these, we pay about half, and the, the cable provider will pay the other half of the connection requirements. Radio system upgrade, which I just talked about, we do have ongoing work with that project, mostly around two important areas. One is continuing the, the good work with interoperability with our surrounding jurisdictions, and then also test, continuing to test and put BDAs in to replace BDAs, stands for bidirectional antenna, but it's the in-building receivers which can rebroadcast. But it's the in-building receivers which can, uh, rebroadcast signals. Uh, in especially in difficult, uh, to penetrate buildings such as, uh, schools, places, any place with a lot of cinder blocks. Where radio signals don't travel well. We really need these B D As up and running. So there was a test done, uh, as part of this project. And they took, I think, the top three hundred buildings in the county, the public build that are public places. And we have, um. Either they had B D As in place or we are installing B D As as part of this project and then testing them. So that work is ongoing for the next few years, uh, because, uh, it's very detailed work. You have to get into each, each building. Sometimes it requires some minor construction. So you have to time it with, uh, you know, the owners of the building. Sometimes they're schools, but sometimes it's just something like the casino or something like that. Uh, and lastly, the, um, public safety technology enhancements. I think of this funding as mostly, um. Supporting the field side of our public safety, uh, employees. So things like M D Cs. Uh, and sheriff M D Cs, uh, license plate readers, uh, iPads for, for fire, things like that. Okay, and I'll move to our, uh, biggest program. Uh, C five, one nine, six hundred. So this is where the majority of, uh, our I T funding is. And we, uh, divide this into, uh, six different areas. And corporate infrastructure, uh, ninety percent of which is planned, uh, to go for the, uh, P C. Uh, refresh, also the public safety area. Uh, which, of which ninety percent, uh, is planned to go to the new CAD replacement, so CAD system replacement. Our enterprise program, uh. Which, uh, of which ninety percent is planned to fund the enterprise, uh, financial system. Replacement or upgrade, uh, network and security. Um, which we have ongoing projects in. And land use area, uh, which is primarily for funding, uh, two, two main things in that area. The lawn, the ongoing lawn work, uh, and work with Astella. Uh, which is the software we use for that and also for, uh, G I S. Uh, for all our G I S services that support lawn and many other programs. Uh, and lastly, a health and human services area where we are working to continue to replace, uh, their older, uh. Kind of, uh, customer relationship manager system. Uh, and I think that is the last one, so, uh. I can unshare my screen and take any capital side questions.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Martin, for the, the, the presentation. Um, uh, mine is going to be related to some of the, the O I T, public safety pieces of it. Uh, I noticed, uh, which is good because I've been, one of those things that I've been advocating for, uh, for. Some of the areas or communities and District One, uh, on the C C T, I don't know if you, uh, can pull it back up. But there was one of those, uh, projects where it was going to expand on the C C T D, uh, T V. Uh, or public facing cameras, if you will. Um, do you know what, how large, uh, or, or expansion of that? Like, what does that mean? Expansion of it? Is that one camera? Is that, is that ten cameras? Uh, my goal is to put, there are some hotspot areas that, uh, that exist in the northern part of the county. And I have every single community meeting that I've gone to, and even when I ran, uh, to, to come back to this seat, I've talked about it. Um, since we can't add more police officers overnight, we can incorporate technology relatively easily. And so, um, there are certainly some areas in, in the northern part of county that I would love to have a county camera there, uh, uh, near. Uh, these hotspots, uh, one to deter people from doing crazy stuff in those areas. Um, but I wanted to see what your thoughts were on what that, I saw it in the budget, but I don't know what that means. Is, is that a, is that a handful, you know, that you're trying to procure? Or is it, did you guys talk to the police department about, you know, maybe fifteen different locations, uh, potential locations like that? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Sure. So there's a lot going on in that area and I'll just, uh, I, I could get, uh, more detailed plans to you. I don't have them with me right now, but I just talk in generalities. What we're seeing is a few things. So the, uh, many years ago, uh, the detention system bought their own C C T V system. Uh, before I T was involved in C C T V at all. And so those systems are all, all basically can't be updated any longer. So they need to be replaced. So we are working very closely with them and with, uh, with the police. Uh, so we always work closely with police, uh, on any C C T V. We have them, we keep them very, very close. In these projects because we know they have great input, uh, on that. And we also have a number of new projects going on in, oh, D P W. So, uh, both at their facilities and some roadway projects. But, so we've got a couple of things there. One is replacing these aged systems, uh, that can't be updated anymore. So we really don't have a choice there. It's mandated that we keep cameras in these locations in the detention centers. And so we've got to stay functional there. So we're looking at some new cameras and some new technology to help us with that. We also just tested a brand new technology, uh, where we're putting cameras onto the new towers. So we've got this great new investment in radio towers and now one of the ways we're protecting it is with. Uh, C C T V cameras so that we, uh, and they also have a new feature which can notify you when, um. If there, if something's flagged. So rather than just going back after the fact, after some. Or what, what have you, the, uh. The, we can actually get notifications, uh, when something's happening. So we are doing some exciting things in that area. Uh, but, uh, I don't have any details for you on your project, but we're happy to discuss that with you.
Done. And I, I, you know, I'll sit down with the police department or ask, and when they brief, um. The, the, ask those specific questions because your minds are specific to community cameras, uh, public facing cameras, uh, not the detention, uh, center. Uh, so that, you know, we can start, you know, being a little bit more, um, proactive. When it, when it comes to criminal activity that's, that's happening right along that northern county border. It, it, the data shows where activity is and that's what I'm trying to follow. Uh, so I want us to be more, uh, agile and, and, and. Uh, proactive, uh, instead of waiting for someone to call us, whereas now that we have the, uh, fusion center that's getting ready to, to open up. That should allow us to have a component, a body of people that are actively sort of keeping eyes throughout the county. And specifically these hot, these hotspot areas where, uh, illicit activity continues to happen. And, and I just want us to be able to do something about it instead of just, um, you know, telling them to. Uh, report it to the police.
I understand and I understand the priority of that and, uh, we're happy to discuss it, but it's a great discussion probably to have with police first. And then we can follow up with, uh, uh, helping to fulfill that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions my colleagues might have of O I T's capital budget? Okay, I don't see any further questions, Mr. Martin. Thank you so much for your team and your service and we will. Move along to recreation and parks.
Thank you. From all of I T, we really appreciate your time today.
So we'll let the transition happen here with, we'll welcome. The Recreation and Parks team. Good afternoon, Miss Lays.
Hello, I'm waiting for my team to get on, but welcome to, uh, Rec and Parks two thousand and twenty-five budget review. Uh, it looks like we saved, uh, the fun department for the last department of the day. So we appreciate your attention, uh, as I know this has been a really long day for, for you guys. As the May season is always really trying for the county council. Um, I want to just introduce some of the folks I have on the car today. Um, obviously you all recognize Ms. Matthews, our deputy director. Uh, Lisa D is our business manager. Um, and Tammy Anderson is joining us on the operating side. She is the chief of childcare services. Uh, they're here to answer any questions that you might have specific on our operating budget. And then you also see, uh, Bruce Bruci, who is our chief of planning and construction, who's going to be walking us through our capital, uh, presentation today. So with that said, I think Darlene's going to point you in the right direction and then I'll take it over on the operating side.
Thank you. Good afternoon, this is Darlene from the Budget Office. And the Department of Rec and Parks budget begins on page two thirty-eight in the budget, proposed budget book. Thank you.
So what we have here for you today is a, uh, operating budget presentation full of some colorful pictures and some facts. So that you can tie back to it when you're making some tough decisions in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the first slide that I have for you today is just who are we? Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we revert our vision, mission and core values. I think Erica, I'm on the next slide already. Um, and, and we are really true to, to that. Uh, mission and vision and it comes full circle when we're asked to do things that maybe are outside of our mission. We tend to take on a lot of different opportunities, but making sure that we're mission driven is the best use of our financial. Uh, resources. You hear us say all the time, enjoy, explore and restore. And, and we hope that through this county council presentation, you enjoy, you explore a little bit and it restores your faith. In the wonderful Department of Recreation and Parks. The next slide is just a pictorial of our organizational structure. There are no proposed changes in the F Y twenty-five budget. Uh, so it's really just for your resource. The next slide is one of my favorite slides and this is the department overview in a very statistical manner. Um, one thing that the Department of Recreation and Parks has gotten much better at over the last couple of years is using data to tell our story. Uh, consistent data so that one day you don't ask us how many perks we have and we say a hundred and sixty and then the next day you ask us and we say a hundred and fifty-eight. Making sure that we always have the same answer to the questions. Uh, this slide is pretty powerful because it draw, it shows you the picture of everything that we do over Rec and Parks. While we only have a hundred and fifty full-time employees, we employ almost a thousand employees every year. Uh, and that includes a large temp seasonal workforce that allows us to, um, beef up our staff. When we are running summer programs, but then slim back down in the winter when maybe we don't need as many employees, uh, to work. On the park side, the numbers are very impressive with over four million, almost five million visitors, uh, to our parks on an annual basis. Uh, what I think is most impressive about the park site is that we operate and own a hundred and sixty parks. That includes your big regional parks that everybody talks about like Quiet Waters and Beverly Triton, uh, Fort Smallwood. But this is also your neighborhood parks, the ones that are in communities. They are intentionally put in communities to connect the community. With the natural, uh, area. On the athletic side, we've seen a huge surge in participants. We have over thirty-five thousand youth and adult participants and about twenty-two hundred registered teams. Uh, we now offer a lot more, uh, diversity in our teams. We offer a lot more sports than we did pre-COVID. Um, on the rec side, our numbers are usually driven by the, the amenity. We have two aquatic centers, two golf courses and two ice skating rinks. Um, and we are continuously seeing growth in the programs, uh, on the rec side. And then everybody loves our childcare side. It has been a big, uh, uh, work effort coming out of COVID. But we served twenty-nine hundred, uh, children in fifty childcare centers. Uh, most impressively was last summer, we had fourteen summer programs open and we served over four thousand, uh, participants. So, uh, the numbers definitely tell the story, but these numbers also help us make decisions. We are making smarter, more data-driven decisions, um, as a department. Next slide. So the next slide kind of connects the dots. When we came, uh, before you last year and asked for a budget. We also set some objectives and when you approved that budget, you gave us six new full-time positions and you approved the pay package. And that goes a long way for us, our success and our ability to now highlight a year later, what have we done with that money? Uh, one of the biggest success stories is just expanding that childcare programming. We were having a really tough time recruiting and retaining childcare employees. We have to adhere to M S D E license requirements, so there has to be a certain ratio in that classroom. And childcare has really worked hard, um, to hire and bring in staff in order to add more. Um, opportunities, uh, for children. So we served over five hundred more children in this current fiscal year. Which is really an impressive statistic. Um, these are also seen on page two thirty-eight of your proposed budget book. If you're following along in that as well. Um, other things to kind of point out is that we reorganized the parks division. And created the Resource Conservation and Protection Unit. That is direct from you providing us an extra position or a new position of a. Uh, I C P supervisor. So by pulling I C P and trails apart, we have become much more effective, um, and responsive. Uh, not only on the trail side, but also on the natural resources. Uh, we were also able to establish our fourth maintenance district in West County to better serve our park patrons. Again, we had had four new, uh, maintenance workers. Those are more than just new positions to us. It created a new district that was now able to go out and serve those hundred and sixty parks in a better way. Adding to the existing districts in order to, um, be above the curve. And that has really driven down the complaints on the maintenance side by visiting parks more frequently. We are able to fix things before the public calls and complains about them being broken or we are able to keep our parks. Um, more beautiful and operational, um, without being so reactive. Uh, another highlight that I'd like to point out is just the fact that we've been able to tell our story better. We produce the summer success story and this is again, looking at the data and making sure that the public, making sure that the elected officials. Understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. Uh, you see a lot more, uh, stories being pushed out from Rec and Parks. To get the right information out into the communities. Next slide is, is that not only did you approve the money, but you showed up. You showed up at our events, you showed up at our ribbon cuttings, you participated in our programs and services, but most importantly. You help us connect with the community on all different levels and for that, we are extremely thankful for your partnership. Even before you approved next year's, uh, budget, your partnership has been very impactful for our department. All right, diving into some of the details on the operating side, the next slide really just summarizes the increase in our budget. So. Nope, sorry. Sixty percent of that is going into personal services. Um, what are we doing that is new? Am I back? All right, so a, a little under two million dollars. Sixty percent of that is going into personal services. So this slide is showing you everything new that we're doing and it's not a lot of high dollar things, but they are very important. Um, uh, one of our biggest priorities was the Jug Bay Emery Waters Environmental cabins. These cabins are coming online in the fiscal year twenty-five and so we've asked for funding for two full-time positions and two part-time positions. Emery Waters property, patrol the property, uh, operate these new cabins and bring online new programming. Um, all of that is an increase of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars as we've only asked for half of the funding. Which means in F Y twenty-six, we'll be funding the entire position. Um, I am in year three of department rightsizing and restructuring. Every year you've heard me talk about just trying to make our department's organization, organization, organizational structure as effective as possible. Um, this year we asked for park assistant, uh, superintendents. And this goes back into the hierarchy of our regional park system to make sure that we have covered, that we have effective operations. And most importantly, that we have safety. Um, by adding a park superintendent to our regional parks, it's an extra layer of supervision. And oversight and leadership on a regular basis. Our parks are open seven days a week from sunrise to sunset. It is really hard to have a, a leader or a manager on site all the time. And this park assistant, uh, will help set that stage in one of our most visited parks and that's Quiet Waters Park in F Y twenty-five. Um, in addition, the budget, uh, includes a handful of reclassification, uh, that just right sizes positions. Into the job that they're doing or allows us to take a vacant, uh, position and upgrade it. In order to expand a program or serve the public more effectively without asking for a new position. So on the athletic division, we're taking a lower level management assistant two position. And we're upgrading it to a rec supervisor that is hand in hand with that growing demand on the athletics. And, and all those teams that I just referred to on the previous page. So rather than coming in and asking for a new position, we're just reorganizing the existing positions we have in order to meet that demand. And then lastly, on the rec, uh, recreational programming, again, not a huge dollar amount, but we're expanding our summer possibilities camp. It's about twenty thousand dollars. It's about twenty thousand dollars. Um, this is a camp that is provided to those individuals that have no fixed uh, addresses. Uh, hugely popular in the ones that we're currently running, and the demand is definitely there, so this allows us to expand that. And we'll be having a possibilities camp in the Glen Burnie Park uh, Elementary School and in Woodside Elementary School in the upcoming summer. Uh, we're rolling out STEAM programs, and that's adding art to the STEM program model. Uh, this is year-long, not just during the summer, but uh, is in a partnership with the schools and specifically children that are homeschooled to participate in programs that allows them to be introduced to uh, not only STEM, but also arts. And then lastly, and one of the largest requests that we have in FY twenty-five is our Child Enrichment Centers. These are centers that are provided for low-cost uh, childcare in the, in community schools throughout the county, mostly in the northern part of the county. To participate in the Child Enrichment Center, you must go to one of these schools, and you essentially pay five dollars a month in order to have before and after care. It is a very needed service, something that we have done over the years. Um, but has grown so much that it's no longer sustainable in the childcare fund. So our FY twenty-five request with um, other low-cost, no-cost recreational program. We have, we currently have six existing CECs. We are adding two new CECs, and that is in North Glen and Woodside Elementary. Um, so the new CECs are about a hundred thousand dollars. All of the CECs combined is a little over four hundred thousand dollars. And that really wraps up our new initiatives in the general fund. Again, of the two million dollars, it's less than half of that. Um, but really the, the investment goes a long way in our ability to meet the needs of the public. The next slide is a little bit more boring. This is just the, the natural what, what are the other increases? Obviously, the compensation is a big piece in our budget, and that's not so much because of the hundred and fifty full-time, but it's because we offer the same COLA to all of our part-time staff. This is a huge initiative for the department and something that I personally have been a big advocate for, is that we have full-time and part-time staff working shoulder to shoulder, doing exactly the same job, just under different classification. And for years, the full-time staff has gotten cost of living increases while the part-time staff has been left behind, and that causes a lot of animosity between employees, but also just from an employee morale makes the part-time staff feel undervalued, and they often move on. Um, and, and don't stay with the department, don't even go for the full-time positions when they're available. So having a COLA across the board for all staff is um, a, is a big number for our department, but is also a good investment, and it's part of the reason why we've been so successful in our programs is because we're able to keep and, and recruit that part-time seasonal staff. Uh, in addition, we've got our merit increase for all of our full-time staff. And then another big increase in our budget is on the golf consultant. And that's kind of a catch-up increase. If you remember last year, a large dollar amount in our budget was to uh, bring everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour. And again, we're talking about hourly wage employees and that everyone would make fifteen dollars an hour. We did not roll that out to our golf consultants, so many of our golf part-time seasonal staff um, is still at minimum wage. This year, this increase is to make all of our golf staff, which we treat like our own staff, it's just through a consultant, to that fifteen dollar an hour minimum as well. And then we always have amenities coming online. We're in a heavy construction uh, cycle on the capital side, so projects coming online, they have associated operating costs. We talk about that when we present the project, and then this is where you actually see the increases. So we've got the Brooklyn Park Track and Field Complex came online, the Fort Smallwood Comfort Station coming online. And then we brought online the Deep Run Rec Center, which was a building in Glen Burnie that we took over from Surpass, and we are making that into a recreational center with a childcare facility in it, and that'll be coming online in the FY twenty-five year as well. So even though it's a little less than a hundred thousand dollars, all of those coming online does it go towards our overall increase in our budget. So that's on the general fund side. If we switch over to the childcare side, we're currently operating in fifty of our fifty-one uh, locations. The one location that we stopped operating in was the middle school. Um, and it was really a logistical uh, decision. When we were staffing up and trying to get as many uh, positions open for participants, uh, we had a middle school that was very under-registered and just not a good use of our staffing. So by closing that and, and shifting that staff over to an elementary school, we were able to offer more programming. We also did an amazing job um, with the change of school hours and working with AACPS in order to make sure that uh, we were in compliance and that we have the right people working in the centers and opening up for more spaces to meet the needs of the families. If you remember last year, we had a, an interesting phenomenon. Everyone wanted PM care, but nobody wanted AM care anymore because it was such a small period of time, it just wasn't worth um, the, the program. So this year, we opened up in the morning a half an hour earlier. And for those of us who have always been working parents, that half an hour makes a really big difference. Um, and so now our morning programs are fully registered as well in our centers. Looking at the new initiatives on childcare on the next slide, um, we have a, a new SAC coming online at Two Rivers Elementary School. That'll serve about seventy-five uh, uh, openings at that elementary school. Anytime we build a new elementary school with a SAC room, we ask for the staffing necessary in order to operate that. Uh, we also have the Deep Run Rec Center. We're gonna be putting a pre-K program in that rec center that'll serve about twenty individuals. We're going through the MSD licensing uh, process right now, so some of that is contingent upon the license and what we're able to do. And we've got a pre-K pilot program, which is a partnership with AACPS. Uh, where they bring pre-kindergarten into the schools as a gap. There's a gap of time in which these children come to school for pre-K, and then they're put on a bus a couple of hours later, and they're sent home to often empty homes. So uh, what we would like to do is run a pilot program to see is the space available in the school for our staff to come in and provide childcare from the time of pre-K and to the time uh, that parents get out of school. Very similar to our after-school program on the school age. And then last but not least, the huge demand for our Summer Fund Center field trips to come back. During COVID, we took off field trips away, and then just because we were trying to hold the cost of childcare down and really focus in on the core services, we slowly brought back some field trips, but not very many field trips. Doing parent surveys and asking for feedback, um, field trips are definitely high in demand. Uh, they are completely paid for. We don't pay for them as the county. The people that participate in the field trips, the families that elect for the field trips, pay for the field trips. So um, you see an increase in our budget to cover that. Um, so all of that uh, adds up and obviously increases the appropriation in the childcare fund um, by about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And therefore, we are also asking for a fee increase of three and a half percent, uh, which is fifteen dollars a month. So our fees will go from four hundred and twenty dollars a month to four hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Still the most affordable childcare that you can get in Anaronda County. So I know that was a lot of information. Rec and Parks as a department is thriving. We are still having fun. We are still serving millions of residents every single year, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have on the operating side um, and the slides that I just ran through before we dive into our capital side.
Thank you for that presentation, uh, Madam Director. Do we have any uh, questions for the operating side of Rec and Parks? I know I had the opportunity to have a lengthy meeting with you, so I think my questions have been answered. Um, I'm not seeing any questions at this time. Um, folks may want you to move right into capital.
Fantastic. So capital's a little bit more detailed. I'm gonna give you a really high overview uh, to start off with. Um, I've got Bruce on the, the call. He's gonna dive into the details. Um, let's just skip ahead to, we're gonna go through our P-class. Um, if you remember, uh, we used to have a couple of C-class projects, but we no longer do. They are now under uh, inspector, or planning and zoning. So let's go right in next slide and then the next slide. We'll go right into P-class overview. And so obviously, I showed you the stats on park visitation. Here's some, some of us thought that that trend would kind of drop off after COVID, but parks have definitely become more and more popular to Anaronda County residents. And to date, in this fiscal year, we already have over, almost four million visitors. Um, so I, obviously with that demand comes a pretty big responsibility to take care of all those parks and amenities. Uh, this year's budget request is ninety-six point six million dollars and has three new projects. I know it face value. This is, number is significant. Um, however, I do want to point out that this request reflects the department focusing in on using renovating and maintaining what we already have in inventory first. Um, to take care of what we have while we are expanding and building um, the new parks has become a priority for the department in the last couple of years. As well as many of our projects are an outcome of public engagement that we've had throughout the year. And then lastly, I want to note that many of these projects are in their second year of construction. So because we're in such a heavy construction year, those numbers um, tend to become more real, and they tend to become larger as we get through uh, the process. So our new projects really reflect upon making financially responsible investments. And we have a lot of needs of county residents, and we get calls every single day, and everybody wants more. So how can we provide more in a fiscally responsible way? You're gonna see things like the Edgewater Recreational Center, uh, which is repurposing a big box store uh, into a recreational indoor facility, a community center that is in high demand. Um, it's an affordable solution over building a standalone amenity, which would cost five times more than what we are doing by renovating a building. You're also going to see the Davidsonville Rec Center, which is a nineteen-seventy-six facility um, that we are dumping tons of money into every year to just put Band-Aids and toothpicks on to keep it up. So coming in and renovating it helps us avoid those recurring work orders and, and avoid that operating money that's going into it to fix the failing structure so that it can continue to serve the public. And then being fiscal conservatives, we're also looking for as much outside funding as we can get. And you will see that this budget brings in almost twelve percent of grant funds um, through Program Open Space, through federal grants, um, our partners with the, the LDC, and then state grants. And that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to apply for those grants, but it is the right way to balance um, such a large uh, request. On the next slide, many of you are familiar with this pictorial of how our projects go from a vision to a reality, especially the bold areas where the public has the opportunity to provide feedback. Um, this project development process has been um, a priority for our department to making sure that we provide a collaborative process that the, the residents of Anaronda County can participate in. And we continue to work with DPW every single day in order to um, complete the work that we started and to engage the public every step of the way. So where does all this money go? The um, the Rec and Parks money goes where the public tells us to put it. We have spent a tremendous amount of time in the last year uh, in the communities. We held over twenty public engagement meetings. We ran a very successful Plan Your Park campaign with over five thousand responses, as well as administered lots of smaller surveys to just determine what the community park, what the communities want in their park and how those parks should be utilized. We facilitated several stakeholder groups to plan future park development um, and really listened to what the public was saying. These aren't just checkmarks to say we completed it, but taking that public feedback and helping it drive forward the future project. And what we're finding is that the public wants a robust, diverse, inclusive, very well-managed park system. Obviously, not an easy bill to fill, uh, when you have so many limited resources and so many competing priorities. But we're excited to say that all of our new uh, projects have had public outreach before bringing them to the county council this year. Um, specifically Marley Creek Park, um, up in the northern part of the county. This is a community that has been asking for a large regional park um, for many years, wanting a natural space that they can utilize, having their own regional parks, so they don't have to get in their car and drive to another regional park. Um, it's been driven by the people. Uh, the Edgewater Recreational Center has also been driven by public feedback. Um, we know that the recreational amenities in South County um, have continued to grow. I know that there have been very many uh, D-seven town hall participants that have testified and written letters and shown up um, at meetings, asking for more amenities. Uh, this was validated by the two thousand responses that we got when we did the Central Avenue and the Reva Park Plan Your Car Campaign. Um, so we listened, and, and we had a great opportunity to purchase a vacant box store and put a recreational amenity inside. Um, so uh, by listening to the public, you're going to see that there's been an emphasis on the park planning that's heavily influenced by the community input. This isn't Rec and Parks waking up and saying, this is what we should put in that building. This is the community saying, this is what we would like to put in that building. It marks a commitment of the department to continue to work with the community before proposing new projects to you. So a lot of money, and where's it all going? Well, on this slide, you can see everything uh, in the black text is currently in construction. Everything in orange is what we are asking for in our FY twenty-five uh, budget. We told you last year when we presented that a lot of our money was going into construction, most of them into phase one of construction. So in the last year, we have completed a ton. We brought Beverly Triton Nature Park online operationally. We completed the Brooklyn Park, uh, the Brooklyn Middle School Ripken Project. We completed Bork Park finally. Uh, we got the final three stages of the Broadneck Trailer underway. The Patuxent River Bridge that will connect Anaronda County to PG County um, is underway. The Fort Smallwood Maintenance Building and Comfort Station is almost completed. Uh, the rehab of Brooklyn Heights Park, as well as many shoreline improvements like the one over uh, in Mayo. In twenty-four, we have Deal, uh, Deal Park, Tannard Springs, Millersville, uh, all new parks that are going into construction. Um, and then we are beginning the campgrounds at Jug Bay and the Mayo Camp Building, which are all scheduled to move into construction uh, sooner uh, within twenty-four. So our goal is really to finish what we started um, and bring these amenities online. And FY twenty-five, about seventy-two million dollars of our overall ask, which is seventy-five, seventy-seven percent just goes into construction. Um, so it's a heavy lift on the construction side, but we are investing in existing parks and new parks um, to meet that demand, and we're really excited to see these projects become a reality. Um, again, one of the most fascinating things about the Rec and Parks CIP is how diverse these construction projects are. We've got shoreline repair, we've got new parks, we've got park expansions, we've got um, rec centers, clubhouse, field lighting, new fields, reusing existing spaces. Um, it's just a creative way of working together um, in order to provide uh, the most amenity to the public with the most effective use of our county dollars. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce. Um, he is gonna dive into the details and pretty much give you an update of each project, where it is and what we're requesting in FY twenty-five. Uh, Naomi, I think you want to point them to the right page numbers, and then Bruce will take it away.
Sure. Uh, South Shore Trail, uh, that starts on page one oh five.
South Shore Trail, P three seven two thousand.
The South Shore Trail is a fourteen-mile trail that once completed will extend between Annapolis and Odenton. The FY twenty-five request is for funding to complete the design of Phase Three and Phase Four for the balance of the construction cost in Phase Four needed due to escalation, and for the construction management and inspection contract for the Phase Three work. Phase Two is presently being rebid, and we anticipate construction on that beginning later this fall. The alignment and design for Phases Three and Four that I mentioned is underway. Note that those, the, the description has changed to show the terminus point between Phases Three and Four as Honeysuckle Lane, not the, the Preserve at Eisenhower Golf Course as, as had been shown previously. Uh, both of those phases are in, moving into alignment and design, and public engagement has begun. The Department of Public Works is working to secure the right-of-way for both of those, and we're applying for a, a Transportation Assistance Program grant this month. To improve our chances with that grant, we've divided Phase Four into two phases. The first phase would extend from the existing Phase One of the trail down to the new Cr- Crowesville Hospital property. That section, we're submitting That section we're submitting for grant approval now. If approved, that grant would be reflected in our FY twenty-six request. The second part of Phase Four is where we're still working on right-of-way issues and that will then extend from Croweville Hospital down to Waterworks Park and on to Best Gate Road in Annapolis.
WBNA Trail, P three nine three six hundred.
The WBNA Trail is a nine-mile trail system that when completed will link the South Shore Trail that I was just talking about across the Patuxent from Wall Chapel Road to the connection to the South Shore Trail. Phases One and Three are fully complete and operational and approximately half of Phase Four is open. Only Phases Four and Five remain to be completed. These two final segments are key trailway connections before joining the WBNA Trail with the South Shore Trail in Gambrels and the linking of the trail to Anorunda and Prince George's County. There are approximately one point nine miles of Phase Four to complete and an alignment and right-of-way study for that phase is presently underway. The bridge crossing over the Patuxent River identified as Phase Five is under construction. It was delayed but is now rolling along. The bridge is completely extended across the river. The decking is in place and the contractors are working to complete the bridge and the trails leading up to it and we expect to open that later this summer.
Greenways Parkland and Open Space, P four hundred two hundred.
This is the account where the Department of Recreation and Parks acquires new property. We have been awarded approximately one point eight million dollars from Program Open Space so far this year. We're seeking an additional million twenty-five thousand dollars from county money. The county funds will be used for non-POS-related expenses to expand greenways and meet the preservation goals defined in both the Green Infrastructure Plan and the Land Preservation, Parks and Recreation Plan. This number will also be revised each year based on the county's allocation from POS.
Facility Lighting, P four four five eight hundred.
This project is one of a series of ongoing multi-year projects to repair, replace, or install new systems and features in our parks. This program addresses the facility lighting of our athletic fields and courts. This year is a little bit of an increase from prior years. Many, the costs have escalated and we're finding the need to increase the electrical service coming into the park to support additional lighting. So that's requiring additional funding. Out-year requests are returned to their normal funding level. This project, I listed on the slide there are some of the work that was completed in the past year. In FY twenty-five, we look to add lighting to a multipurpose field at Maryland City Park and upgrade lighting on an existing field. We're also looking to upgrade the lighting on three of the fields at the Bachmann Sports Complex.
Recreations and Parks Planning, P four five two five hundred.
This is the program where we fund our planning and study work that precedes the projects before we bring them to you. This year, you see some of the projects that we've had in planning. Our unused parks concepts, the director mentioned the Plan Your Parks survey work earlier in the year. We completed studies for Valentine Creek Water Access, Bayhead Park Bicycle Facilities. We're wrapping up the South River Farm Park Master Planning effort now and next week we're kicking off the GIS Survey and Mapping effort. We've completed the facility assessment at Davidsonville Recreation Center. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. We're underway with the master plan work on Old Mill Area Park Improvements. That's the Arden on the Severn Park and Waterberry Park. And the master planning work is underway now on the expansion of Severn Danza Park. In FY twenty-five, the funding we're requesting will go to cover Biennial Bridge Inspection Program, which addresses both pedestrian and vehicular bridges in our parks and trails. Also going to be looking at the facilities need assessment for our South County Recreation Center. Out-year requests will be determined based on the needs of the department at the time of those requests.
School Outdoor Recreation Facilities, P four five seven thousand.
This is the multi-year, multi-location program that constructs or improves recreational facilities on Board of Education properties to support public recreational uses. You can see the list of projects completed in FY twenty-four. A lot of tennis court work on school campuses. Our FY twenty-five request is a little larger than usual as the result of a state bond bill being added to our budget to begin lighting field improvements at Annapolis Middle School. The program returns in out-years to the more normal level of funding. In addition to Annapolis Middle School this year, we also show additional tennis court repairs at Marley Middle School and Annapolis High School.
Stream Shoreline Erosion Control, P four six seven, I'm sorry, P four six eight seven hundred.
This project seeks to improve the resiliency of and preserve the county's investment in our waterfront park properties. We have multiple projects, as you can see, listed here, moving into construction in FY twenty-five. In addition to the five construction projects listed, we will be starting the design of the shoreline protection and other improvements at Jonas and Ann Catherine Green Park in Annapolis and in the former retreat area at Quiet Waters Park. The FY twenty-six request is expected to cover the construction at these locations. And I like to note that we continue to have regular conversations with Mr. Fleming and the Resilience Authority as we work together on a number of these projects.
Park Renovation, P four seven nine eight hundred.
This is one of my favorite projects, so I always hijack the slide. It's an ongoing multi-year request, this year eight point two million dollars. We're trying to keep up with our aging facilities as well as rolling out the new amenities. This year, we've been extremely successful with the funds approved in this budget. We did our nineteenth pour-in-place rubber surface on playground, which makes them more accessible, makes them cleaner, easier to maintain. We have new playgrounds, like the one that we just replaced at Mayo Park, which is a fully accessible playground, as well as the one going in at Fort Smallwood and improving three new community playgrounds. We dumped about three hundred thousand dollars into Mead Village to rehabilitate the entire park. Again, another project with a great return on our investment. By giving it a little bit of TLC, it is now utilized in a very positive way in an area that definitely needed a safe park to use. We also put pickleball courts at the Kerry Whedon and Shadyside Wharf. We began to rehabilitate seven concession stands with Quirkin Middle School being one of the largest concession stand projects that we have ongoing. We've also completed renovations at the Mayo Water Reclamation Facility for moving our maintenance team over there. We were able to update and renovate the new deep run facility to bring an amenity to North County and allowed us to use funds in order to to replace an amenity. So, you know, with all the increased visitation, with the participation, the inquiries that we get, the complaints that we get, the demands have gone up tremendously over the last three years. Sometimes these come directly to our department, they go to our administration, they go to you as county council or our state elected officials. This Pike Reno account is our catch-all. It's how we are able to kind of react, react to those inquiries. It is truly your best investment in the capital budget that if you find any coins in the cushions of the couch in this process, I urge you that this is the best place to put it because we can always do more in Pike Reno and it helps everyone in the county by increasing this budget.
Broadneck Peninsula Trail, P five zero four one hundred.
The Broadneck Peninsula Trail is a nine-mile trail extending from the BNA Trail to Sandy Point State Park. The requested funding for FY twenty-five is for the final segments of Phases One B and Five. There are no planned out-year requests. On the trail, Phases One, Two, and Four A have been completed. Phase Three from Baydale Drive to Anorunda Community College is under construction and will be finishing later this summer. Phases One B and Five, which extend from Cape St. Clair through Bayhead Park and on to Sandy Point State Park are under construction and will complete later this calendar year.
Facility Irrigation, P five zero ninety one hundred.
Another one of our multi-year, multi-location programs. This one installs and repairs wells and irrigation system on our athletic fields throughout the park system. The FY twenty-five request is consistent with previous years and has no change in out-years. This request also funds repairs and replacement components in existing irrigation systems that are way too numerous to list on this slide.
Fort Smallwood Park, P five three five nine hundred.
The master plan for Fort Smallwood Park was completed in October two thousand and nine and since then, we've been working diligently to implement that plan. The improved beach area was opened in two thousand and twenty-two and Phase Two A, which is presently under construction, will add beachfront concession and comfort stands, rehabilitate a historic concession stand and construct a new maintenance building. The photo that you see on the right there is from last week of the new beachfront comfort and concession stand. And as the director said, we hope to be opening that to the public shortly. Phase Two B is the adaptive reuse of the historic barracks into a renovated visitor center. It's presently in design and will progress into construction in two thousand and twenty-five. Our FY twenty-five funding request is for the balance of the construction money needed to complete the rehabilitation of the barracks.
Turf Fields and Regional Parks, P five six one seven hundred.
A simple ask here, we are requesting in FY twenty-five funds to study our operation and maintenance of our turf fields to help us make better, do better at what we do in managing these athletic fields. And we also are asking for funding to construct stormwater improvements at Bell Branch Park.
Northwest Area Park Improvements, P five six five one hundred.
This is an ongoing multi-year project that is fully funded by the proceeds from the Video Lottery Impact Aid and the project list that you see here has been approved by the Video Lottery Facility Local Development Council, requests a half a million dollars to conduct a planning and marketing study in the LDC area.
Water Access Facilities, P five six seven four hundred.
This is a multi-year project to enhance water access opportunities in existing parks. It's been extended through FY twenty thirty. The Galesville Pier renovation was completed and master planning for Gateway Park have been started in the current fiscal year. Work continues on our efforts to install ADA accessible gate systems at current water access parks. A feasibility study is also underway examining twelve existing waterfront park locations for expanded opportunities to experience the water without having to use a boat. Such uses may include swimming and fishing locations, paddle-in locations, and other waterside amenities. One of those locations is planned to move into design in FY twenty-five. We'll also start design on improvements at both Valentine Creek and Deal Wharf in FY twenty-five.
North Orundo Swim Center Campus Improvements, P five seven thousand.
The design and permitting of a splash pad at this location is underway and will move into construction later this summer. The NAC site was selected for a needed multipurpose field in the Glen Burnie area and the campus improvements project presently in design adds that multipurpose field and other community amenities, including a new playground, new comfort station, and some site improvements. The project is started design and should move into construction in fiscal twenty-five. Our request in fiscal twenty-five is for the final design and construction funding. And I'll add that if you haven't heard enough about this project this afternoon, please join the Department of Recreation and Parks and the Department of Public Works at six o'clock at the North Orundo Aquatic Center when we meet the public to present the thirty percent schematic design for these improvements.
Eisenhower Golf Course, P five seven zero two hundred.
This is a continuation, no change in this program. The design continues to progress and our FY twenty-five request is for the balance of the construction funding needed. This construction funding is based on the current cost and fiscal analysis. The project is expected to move to construction bidding by the end of two thousand and twenty-four.
Beverly Triton Nature Park, P five seven zero three hundred.
The new comfort station, bathhouse, playground, pavilion, entry gatehouse, beachfront access shower and all those improvements have been completed. Our FY twenty-five request is for construction funding to complete Phase Two of the Shoreline Erosion Project. It's another project that we're working on with the Resilience Authority.
Hot Sox Park Improvements, P five seven three two hundred.
The park improvements at Hot Sox Field are complete. The design of the measures to both preserve the Wilson House and make it more accessible for visitors is underway. The FY twenty-five funding request is for funding needed to complete those renovations and site improvements.
Caris Wharf Pier, P five seven three three hundred.
The renovation of the overwater portion of the pier was previously completed and operational changes have been implemented with community input, which have eliminated the need for the proposed roadwork. The balance of the previously approved funds will be used to complete the bulkhead repairs, provide ADA accessible parking and make other improvements. Our budget request here actually returns ninety-eight thousand dollars in unused funding.
London Town Parking Expansion, P five seven six four hundred.
The FY twenty-five request is for funding for the construction of ADA accessible pathways through the grounds and gardens at Historic London Town. The design of the pathways is presently being completed by the Historic London Town Foundation.
Parks and Trails Resurfacing, Countywide, P five seven eight nine hundred.
Our funding request for FY twenty-five jumps up a little bit to allow us to catch up and cover the increasing cost of asphalt materials, returns to the previous levels in the out-years. This is the multi-year, multi-site program where we rep- This is the multi, multi-year, multi-site program where we, we repave and repair trails, um, both our mainline trails and our trails in our parks such as Kinder Farm and Havenwood.
Brooklyn Park Community Center, P five seven nine triple zero.
The initial phase of this project improvements to Brooklyn Heights Park is, is presently under construction. Actually, Brooklyn Heights Park is closed because of that construction. When complete, those new amenities will include our second adaptive recreation field, a new lighted multipurpose field, community gardens, basketball courts, and a new dog park. The multi-generational community center is starting in design. And our FY twenty five funding request is for the funds necessary for the construction of the new building.
ADA Compliance Implementation, P five eight four three hundred.
This extends the program through FY thirty. This work includes identifying barriers and inadequacies in our parks and facilities where the public engages in program services or activities. We, we ask for a continual level of funding and hopefully that through by twenty thirty, we will have knocked out all of the barriers that remain in our system.
Jug Bay Environmental Education Center, P five eight four five hundred.
This project serves to expand jug base capabilities to provide Amer- environmental education, ecological research, and habitats stewardship. Phase one of this project is new camp cabins, pavilion, bathhouse, rela- related site improvements that are be moving into construction later this year. Our FY twenty five funding request is for the design of Phase two of the project, which will repurpose an existing barn into a multi-use interior spaces uh for use by park visitors and visiting researchers. And for the construction of the Phase three improvements, which includes improvements at the pier along the waterfront and provide a kayak storage area.
Quiet Waters Park Rehabilitation, P five eight four six hundred.
We continue to knock out projects at, at Quiet Waters Park. The photograph you see at the, on the bottom there is the gully repair adjacent to the Holly Pavilion that was completed just last week, eliminating a significant erosion problem that was threatening our park and the health of Harness Creek. The Visitor Center and Blue Heron Rehabilitation Project, the engineering evaluations have been completed and the design of the improvements is presently underway. In FY twenty five, we anticipate continuing renovations previously identified. And, and the funding is for construction for those improvements.
Mayo Beach Repairs, P five eight four seven hundred.
Another repair and maintenance project. The design of the day camp replacement building, which houses our uh adaptive recreation camp as well as park support functions. The design is complete and that project will soon be moving into bidding, heading for construction start before the end of this year. Numerous multiple repairs have been completed in the main pavilion and park office buildings. The photograph on the bottom there is the restored uh shoreline. That project was just completed last week. Uh, our FY twenty five request is for the balance of the funds needed to complete the maintenance work.
Bacon Ridge Severn Chapel, P five eight eight triple zero.
Master planning was completed previously and design is wrapping up on the improvements to the Severn Chapel area. This includes a new park entrance and, and safety improvements along Severn Chapel Road and the entrance to the park, new parking lots and equestrian hitching and care area, resource conservation and protection ranger support facilities, stormwater management, and other site improvements. The FY twenty five request is for construction, the balance of the construction money for those improvements.
Gresham House, Gresham Historic House Improvements, P five eight eight two hundred.
This project is for the design and construction of improvements to the Gresham Historic House and, and focuses primarily on renovations and code compliance efforts. Uh, in the, we hope in the future it will, will take on different uses uh so we can offer more programming there. We've completed, demolished a couple of the accessory structures onsite. Have architect working on the design of some of the repairs. And we expect the roof replacement and multiple repairs to be underway here shortly. This project continues through FY twenty five. Our FY twenty five request is for funding for those improvements.
Crownesville Memorial Park, P five eight eighty four hundred.
And this project is, uh, is listed under P class, but this project is actually being managed by the Department of Public Works.
Davidsonville Recreation Center Renovation, P five nine two five hundred, and this is a new project request.
This new project is to rehabilitate the failing facilities at the Davidsonville Recreation Center. The former missile site was added to the park system in nineteen seventy six, and it, it's pretty well reached the end of its lifespan. The buildings onsite are heavily used by a variety of community groups, uh, including an amateur radio club, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Fly Fishing Club, Canine Club, and childcare providers. The buildings are generally all in poor conditions. Recently, we had to replace a ten thousand dollar piece of, of HVAC equipment in the childcare center to ensure that there was even heat in that part of the facility. Essentially, no improvements have been made to these facilities since the Army constructed them. The department, along with Central Services, are, are good friends at the facility's maintenance division, uh, spend way too much time and way too many dollars trying to keep this facility open and operating. We, we are, we are continually in a, in a patch up Band-Aid mode. The work needed is far beyond patchwork. This is supported by the facilities assessment report that was just completed. And so that's why this is moving into a standalone project. Amount of work that needs to be completed immediately is, is addressing life safety, HVAC, and code requirement issues to help make this a more energy efficient campus. The buildings all require energy conservation upgrades that include the replacements of the mechanical plumbing and electrical systems and, and insulation in the building envelopes. Our FY twenty five request is to design the renovated or replacement facilities. This is a new project, so we usually talk about operating costs. However, since this is an existing facility, there will be no additional operating costs. And in fact, we expect because of the energy savings, we'll actually be looking at a reduction in our operating costs associated with this facility. This is an important project is, is it addresses the need for indoor and outdoor recreational athletics and community use facilities and spaces. It's consistent with the goals of Plan twenty forty and the twenty twenty two LPP RP. It's an reuse of an existing park site, limits our development footprint. And this project, like all of our projects, will be executed in a manner consistent with our efforts to provide responsible stewardship for the county's natural resources, while allowing county residents increased opportunities for recreation.
Edgewater Recreation Center Improvements, P five nine two six hundred. This is our second request for the year.
This is, this project is for the design of a new community use recreation center in the Edgewater area. The initial work results in one complete community recreation center. The FY twenty five request the former giant on Old Solomon's Island Road into a new indoor recreation center. The project will address proximity needs for South County residents and reduce the need to travel to distant facilities for indoor recreational opportunities. This project addresses the need for indoor and outdoor recreational athletic and community use facilities and is consistent with the goals of both Plan twenty forty and the LPP RP. With the opportunity to retrofit an existing structure, it again limits our development footprint and no development impact on the surrounding community, no tree loss, and no increase in stormwater runoff. The indoor rec center is anticipated to require nine new staff positions and have a total cost of one point six million dollars per year for operating costs.
And our last project for the day is Marley Creek Regional Park, P five nine two seven hundred. And this is also our last new project request.
This project will fund the planning, design, and construction of a new Glen Burnie area regional park on existing county-owned property at the end of Hospital Drive. The undeveloped seventy-two acre site was purchased in twenty nineteen and envisioned to include the conservation of green space and environmental features while incorporating community park amenities. Out years, our request this year is for design funds. Out years request will be for additional design and construction funding. This site was studied by Recreation and Parks to address recreational needs in the Glen Burnie area. We evaluated as part of our turf field study. We looked at it as part of the unused and underutilized parkland study. And was it, it was the subject of, one of the subjects of our Plan Your Park survey that was conducted earlier this year. The two thousand and four Glen Burnie Area Small Area Plan indicated the need for a wide variety of recreational facilities and for the maintenance and protection of open and natural spaces. The need for a Glen Burnie Park was also identified in the twenty twenty two LPP RP. This project addresses those needs and makes use of an underutilized county site. It also eliminates the need for residents in the Glen Burnie area to travel to more distant facilities. We will execute this project consistent with our stewardship of other natural resources as we develop this. Uh, while we provide increased opportunities for recreational op, uh, when complete, the park is expected to require six new staff positions and have a total annual operating cost of eight hundred thousand dollars. That is the end of our request.
Thank you. Uh, while Bruce is turning off the screen, we do want to just thank you for your time and your participation today. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions on the capital projects. Ms. Radbien.
Thank you. So I have, uh, two questions to start with, and they're both just getting a little bit more information about, um, projects that you have in the works. And the first one is about water access at Valentine Creek. Um, I see that, I, I believe I saw that that was, um, going into the, the design phase and the study phase are complete. And so I wanted to ask what the next phase, um, entails.
Okay, so with the water access study for Valentine Creek, we did complete the study. We had public engagement a while ago on this project and the scale has been reduced significantly. Um, we've pulled a lot of it back, so we'd be just starting with trying to get people into that natural area, building a little bit of park in and then getting people down to the water. So it's a lot of the bigger improvements that were proposed are no longer part of the project. As with our typical capital projects, once we get to thirty percent, we will have additional public engagement for more feedback.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other question is with respect to Bacon Ridge. Um, I noticed that one of the improvements that is slated for the future Bacon Ridge is for equestrian um vehicles, and I know that the bicycle community, um, has expressed concern because they have, you know, with their own volunteer, uh, labor, created, um, the mountain biking trails that are, um, that go through Bacon Ridge. And so they've been concerned because equestrian use and mountain bike use do not really coexist, at least on the side of the ma- mountain bikers. I think it actually works okay the other way around, but, um, I'm curious what you can tell me about this. I want to make sure that their work has, is protected.
So the department has engaged a separate group of stakeholders, which includes the mountain bikers, the equestrians, and the hikers. For us to sort of develop a trails master plan that would connect Bacon Ridge over to Crownesville. There are certain areas in the Bacon Ridge section that we think could be utilized for equestrian trails while preserving the mountain bikers' opportunities to get around the site. So we have a whole separate work group that's sort of working through these issues. The equestrian trails, they don't really require anything special. Um, they can use the same trails that we use, but we are being sensitive to the mountain bikers. We are working with MET as well to make sure that we're in compliance with all of our easement requirements as well.
So does that mean that the mountain bikers will be able to, um, con- continue to have, um, you, you know, sort of use of the trails that, well, I mean, I guess, I want to say exclusive use of the trails that they created? Or will some of the trails that they created, um, be available to, um, you know, other uses?
So we haven't gotten that far into the design. Again, this is just us trying to figure out how all the pieces play nicely together. Um, there may be opportunities where there is some crossover between mountain bikers and equestrians. Um, if we have to build, say, a bridge structure, we would build the bridge that could hold the mountain bikers and the horses. But we are trying our best to isolate them and to keep them separate.
Okay, if there's any way I could be looped in just to, you know, maybe put my ear in one of those, one or two of those meetings, um, I would, I would greatly appreciate that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just have a couple unrelated questions. Um, some of them submitted by constituents. Um, so for the, uh, Beverly Triton Nature Park, would you just be able to send me a little bit more information about that shoreline erosion project? Um, that would be most appreciated. I don't want to, you don't need to go into the details today, take everyone's time, but, um, I appreciate the fact that you highlighted that in your presentation. Um, moving on, could you expand on the Mayo Beach Park? The project, it's about not quite nine hundred thousand dollars that is in the, uh, budget, in the capital budget book, if you could expand a little bit on what specifically that is for?
Good. So just, I'll start with a little bit of the background and then I'll turn it over to Bruce for some of the details. This project was initiated, uh, some time ago. We actually did a study, we went out and we assessed the property, there were numerous ADA issues. The building right now that serves sort of as the garage for the park, it also serves for the summer camp. So the two together didn't work very well together. So what we've done is we've decided to rehabilitate that building. And then that's where some of this effort is going. We've been working on electrical upgrades, uh, roof repairs, drainage issues. And then Bruce can sort of tell you what this next phase is for.
We, we, we actually, the, the electrical work, uh, the entire electrical distribution system needed to be replaced. And that was a big port of, the big part of this work. Uh, but, but this is, uh, we described the Mayo Beach Park project as the world's largest honeydew list, uh, because there were, there were cracks, there were doors, uh, we replaced floors, we worked on heating systems. Uh, just last week, the new playground was completed in addition to the, the shoreline work. So a little bit of everything going on there. And the, the next phase is the replacement camp building and work associated with that.
Okay, so the almost, it's, it's not quite nine hundred thousand, um, but that's all for the replacement of that camp building.
Yeah, mainly, yes.
Thank you, that is very helpful. Madam Chair, may I continue? I don't see, if anyone else sticks their flag up, I will take a turn.
That's fine, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, same question regarding the Gresham Historic House. If you could just elaborate on what, uh, this year's two point one million dollar request will be used for?
Okay, similar to our Mayo's project, we've completed a conditions assessment report. And this is the time where we actually start the construction that's out there, and Bruce can provide you those details.
We've, we've taken down the old garage building that was in the back of the property and restored that area. There's a design team that's working on a replacement for the roof of the main house. We have a lot of moisture and humidity issues affecting the historic house. So we need to replace the roof. We also need to regrade the site, waterproof the basement and foundation area. That work is, is under design now, will be going into construction later this year. We're also looking to fix the parking and roadway problems so that people be able to get in there. And there's some anachronistic features in there that we need to remove and do some site restoration. We have some non-compliance issues on the site. Uh, a- again, it's a large list of, of maintenance type things.
Awesome, thank you. I'm scanning for other people's flags. Um, similar question regarding the Bell Branch drainage work. I've, have some constituents who are particularly interested in a timeline. If there is one yet for when they can expect, um, construction and improvements to actually begin.
So we've been, as you know, we've been working with DPW on this project and I would have to refer to DPW for the timeline.
Okay, DPW asked me to refer to, directed me towards you guys. So, um, maybe the, maybe all three of us can get on one, uh, communication chain to, to just be able to answer that question. I would appreciate that.
I believe David, I believe David Braun just, uh, popped onto the screen and he can provide you that answer.
Yeah, um, uh, Councilwoman, the design for this is underway. We're actually working on the out, uh, outfall, whether we need an easement to, to, in order to install an outfall or not. Um, the hope is that with construction funding provided and effective July one, um, that by late summer, early fall, we might be able to be under construction.
Fantastic, that's going to be very welcome news. Taking notes, apologies. Um, I have heard a few, from a few constituents, um, in South County that, uh, they have heard rumors that Deal Park is not moving forward. I wanted to give you the opportunity to, uh, address those rumors head on.
Uh, that rumor is a new rumor to me because we are moving forward with construction very short.
The budget indicates as well, but I just wanted to make sure.
And we had the public meeting here recently where it was totally focused on construction. So we're getting ready to get out there and get moving.
And, and la- last, last week, the Department of Public Works conducted the pre-construction meeting with the contractor. Uh, a South County business is going to be the general contractor on the project. And they are making plans to mobilize on site. We should see earth moving out there within the next forty-five days.
Well, that will certainly put any rumors to rest about not moving forward when we start to see the earth to move. So, uh, thank you for just make, being very clear on that. I appreciate your patience. Um, just last two quick questions. I don't see it in the budget, but can you confirm for interested community members regarding King's Branch Conservation Area, that there is no funding allocated for any sort of improvement, modification, enhancement or increased use at that?
That is correct.
Thank you. And last, um, do you get, do we pay? This is a very, you may have to follow up with me on this, which is fine. But do we as a county pay the MAP church for the use of their fields for our recreational, um, youth sports?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be able to provide just how much we're, we, we spend on that? Um, it, I don't expect you to have it at your fingertips right now, but if you wouldn't mind emailing that to me, that would be helpful.
Okay, so just to follow up, it's the Beverly Triton Shoreline Project and then the MAP church lease, and I'll get you both of those.
Amazing, thank you so much, and thank you for a very thorough presentation today.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm having technical difficulties. I cannot figure out how to get my camera on, on my cellphone app. Um, so please bear with me. I want to thank you guys for having Spriggs, um, in your updates and broad, the Broadneck Trail. I think the Broadneck residents are ready to use the full trail from Sandy Point all the way over to BNA. And I have promised constituents, once we are able to access the entire route, there are going to be more people and more bikers on that trail. So, um, I know the, the Fiedler family is very excited for that. Um, I did want to ask a question on, or a few questions actually, on P four five two five zero zero. This is, I believe, the project number where feasibility studies are located, is that correct?
Yes, it's P four five two five hundred, Wreckin Parks Project Planning.
Yes, perfect. So how, how does that project number work? Are feasibility studies all handled equally? Or is there a cost involved depending on size, location? How does, how does that work?
Okay, so P four five two five hundred, as we, you've mentioned, is the study where somebody has a wonderful idea and they want the department to sort of get smarter on a topic. Uh, we generate a scope, we work with DPW. And again, it, the price for those projects vary depending on the magnitude, the complexity of the project. Um, how many properties we're looking at, so each one is looked at individually.
Okay, so if one, what, what would be a smaller range project, a feasibility study that's in the smaller scope range?
Uh, typically, they would be around the one twenty-five, one fifty, a hundred fifty thousand dollar range.
And then a larger project?
Um, I'd have to get some numbers, but I would assume that possibly the either indoor sports complex one or the unused parks concepts where we study twenty different locations would be some of the more expensive studies that we produce.
Okay, so if there's one location, th- even though the scope of the one location may be large, but there's one location that was studied, that could keep the project feasibility study in the smaller range scale?
Yes.
Okay, that's very helpful to know. Um, and I, I just have to, for the record, follow up with, there is no funding in this budget for ABMX Park at Bayhead Park, correct?
There is no funding.
Thank you very much. And one more question unrelated. Do we have any idea if the cost of the smart potties has gone down?
Are you talking about the ones that were for the, that like the, the throne version of the?
Yes, I know Ms. Hammer and I talked about this last budget as a way to maybe address, uh, facilities at different parks. But my understanding is the price was still pretty high at that point. I don't know if they're starting to move it all in the right direction.
I'm going to direct that one to Jessica, because she's been handling our porta potty issue.
Thank you. So after last year's, uh, budget review, the department took under like a pilot program for adequate facilities. And we did look at alternatives to the porta potty, more sustainable, um, porta potty specifically. We got a, uh, quote that was an estimated five thousand dollars a month per unit, which means that one unit, solar panel, com- compostable toilet would be about sixty thousand dollars a year. If we were to replace all of our porta potties countywide with those new sustainable, um, units, we would need four point five million dollars. So I know porta potties are not glamorous, I know that they don't fix a lot of our issues, but the newer models, the sustainable, the thrones, there's, there's lots of fancy names that are coming out, are still extremely expensive. And we're hoping that as they hit the market and they roll out and they become more common, that that'll drive the price down and make them more affordable. Um, but we, we really didn't think that replacing the existing porta potties, the chemical, um, toilets with the sustainable options, uh, was a very financially responsible decision at this point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You couldn't see my facial expression when you gave the figure, but that is a very large figure, so I'll, I picked my chin up off the desk and here we are. Um, I appreciate that. I just want to say, I recently, um, had a young little one in my, um, responsibility and used a porta potty at a park. I'm not going to name it because I don't have to tell you how clean it was and everybody's going to go to it. Um, but it was a great experience and someone commented that it was very clean and they appreciated how clean it was. So thanks to, uh, staff and our contractors for staying on top of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, one last question I forgot to ask before. Do you, and Director Leif, I know you and I have had a, a conversation prior to today, but I just want to make sure I ask it, so it's on the record. Um, the timeline on the Edgewater Rec Center from now until the point where residents will be able to use it, do you have an approximation? Obviously, I know there's a lot of variables that you can't necessarily predict to the day, but if there's a ballpark that you'd be willing to share?
So I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Jessica. Right now where we are is we are working with DPW on procurement of a consultant to get us started. And we hope to be in design through pretty much the rest of twenty twenty-four. And construction would be during twenty twenty-five. And that's right now as good as I got. Jessica?
That's helpful, thank you.
So, so this is kind of a new way of thinking of things, and I think that is sometimes a little bit hard to digest. A typical capital project would take, you know, three years to get into construction, especially if we were doing a standalone building on a piece of property. And so because this property exists, all we're doing is taking that fifty thousand square foot shell and we're remodeling it inside. So like Erica said, we'll be able to start the project relatively quickly, um, once that we take ownership. Um, one of the big pieces that I think is important in your district, Shannon, is that we're looking to host a community event at the site in July to really ask the community, what is it you would like to see, um, in this rec center? What would you, what type of classes would you like? What type of use would you like in that physical space to help us with the programming side of that rec center and really make it be a public driven, um, process? So, um, as quickly as we can move on renovating, updating the HVA systems, making sure that the, the physical structure is ready, we also want to take our time with getting the feedback from the community. So it's kind of one of these new models where we want to get the public feedback while we are making the building sustainable and then create a renovation that can best serve the needs of the public, um, in a shorter timeframe than if we were building from scratch.
I can appreciate that. Thank you very much for the information.
We have any other questions this time for the capital portion of the Wreckin Parks budget? Like I said, I had a lovely nearly two hour meeting, private meeting with you, Jessica, so, Ms. Leif. So I feel like all my questions have been answered. Um, I don't see any additional, uh, interest from council members, so, um, thank you, thank you all very much for the work you do every day and coming before us with a very thorough presentation.
Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
At this time, is there any other business to be brought before the county council? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Ledbetter, so.
So a second?
Second, Fiedler.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I don't hear any opposed, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until tomorrow, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven PM, when we will meet in the county council chambers for a final public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-five budget. It's a beautiful day outside, I hope everyone can get out and enjoy the afternoon. Thank you and we'll see you tomorrow.